Before we begin the meeting, I believe we have people who are here tonight to speak about the mask policy. Because this item is on the agenda, the timing for those speakers will once again be different than recent meetings. If you're here to speak about the mask policy, you will need to sign up to speak under unfinished business when we have the public hearing for the proposed policy. Public comment at the end of the meeting is reserved to hear from the public on items that are not on the agenda but pertain to the general business of the district. In accordance with our policy, you will only be able to speak once about the mask policy during our meeting. You may sign up to speak to other topics at any time before the last speaker finishes speaking during the appropriate comment period. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Joe Glimp of the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church in Largo. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chairperson, Mrs. Long, and the National Anthem. It will be performed by the Lakewood High School graduate, um, from the Lakewood High School graduation ceremony, performed by the now Lakewood High School alumna, Casey Milton. Please stand.
God of all grace, we thank you for Pinellas County, our home, for the friends and family who have given us to love and care for here and in far-off places. Merciful God, in July of last year, we pray to you, asking for guidance in a year ahead that would be like no other before. We anticipated days of uncertainty and perhaps even often rapidly changing circumstances, and there were. We thank you for wisdom and direction, for the enduring dedication to the task of educating our young friends that you have inspired in our teachers, in classrooms virtual and in person, and administrators throughout the past school year. It is as though we have come through a wilderness. Even as we are completing a school year, we are looking ahead to the next year with changes taking place in schools throughout the county, with uncertain resources, with challenging decisions before us. Bless this board as they contemplate the varied sides of every issue. Grant that they will do so, as always, with great study and an openness for what is best for all. And walk with our families as they recover from the past year and as they consider what may lie ahead in the fall. Bless them with some time away in the coming weeks, whether they actually go away or stay home. Give them rest, wisdom in raising their children, peace amid all the stresses in their lives each day. Here are our prayers, oh God, for you are indeed our rock and our redeemer. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Very nice. Thank you Pastor Glimp. You are always welcome here and we appreciate how often you're able to step in and do this for us. And, oh my goodness, was that ever beautiful? That was Casey Milton. And, gosh, that was just beautiful.
How was that, that graduation? Wow.
All right. Very good. All right. Tomorrow is the last day of school for our students, and we are so very proud of all of them for working to overcome the challenges of this past year. We're very fortunate to hold in-person commencement ceremonies for our graduating seniors this year. It was wonderful to hear the live applause and to see the students and families gathering to celebrate this important milestone. So let's take a look at some of the ceremony highlights and recognize the success of our students and our dedicated staff.
To my seniors, let me just point out, this is the first time we've assembled together this year. And you know, I love an audience and I love to have in the auditorium, and you have no idea how much I appreciate the next few moments I'm going to have with you. So, thank you and I love you so much. It's just fantastic to see you all together.[436.02][436.02][applause]
Class of 2021, we are proud of you, we salute you, we celebrate you, we wish you well. Always remember to demand excellence, but more importantly, to lead with excellence.
We are a creative, courageous, and resilient class. We went through a portion of our junior year and our entire senior year in a pandemic. Yet we continue to push through, working with the changes, even if it may have gotten difficult to roll with punches at times. That is something to be commended for. You are someone to be commended for.
Class of 2021, you have done something that no other graduating class of Seminole High can ever claim. You led the way with elegance and achieved unprecedented academic, social, emotional growth and success during the middle of a pandemic, no less.
If you've ever had me as a teacher, you know that I am constantly reminding you that you're amazing just the way that you are, that you're intelligent, that you're capable of anything, and that most importantly, you are loved. Please don't ever forget that. Nobody can live the life that you live, and each day is a new opportunity to bring what's unique about you to life in a special way.
We also couldn't have done it without our teachers, faculty, and staff. Between unique morning greetings, chemistry experiments, exciting trips, sarcastic wit and humor, hashtag #SpurgesForAll, passion for spirit weeks, and so much more, our teachers taught us everything while making it exciting and memorable.
In closing, it has been a remarkable year. The class of 2021 will be remembered as one of the most accomplished to ever walk the halls of St. Pete High School. I wish you each good health and happiness, and I will leave you all with one final thought, which is a quote from Dr. Seuss. "Life is too short to wake up in the morning with regrets, so love the people who treat you right, forgive the ones who don't, and believe everything happens for a reason. If you get the chance, take it. If it changes your life, let it. Nobody ever said it would be easy, they just promised you it would be worth it. Remember, once a green devil, always a green devil."
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating the new graduates of Jonathan C. Gibbs High School, Class of 2021.
And I think it's just as exciting for the board members and superintendent and staff as it is for the students themselves. So, thank you for putting that all together. It was good to relive it. All right, we'll now move on to introductions of professional and community organization representatives with Ms. Isabelle Mascheranes, our Public Information Officer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Greggo and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. From the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, we have Nancy Valardi, President. Representing Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, Maria Cantonas, Committee Member. There are no members of the media present this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Greggo, are there any changes to the amendment, I mean to the agenda?
There are no amendments to the agenda.
All righty, good, thank you. Board members, any items that would need to be pulled? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Aye, motion.
All right, we have a motion. Bye, Mrs. Long, is there a second?
Sure.
And Mr. Dudley, you have a second. All right, so all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And it passes six-zero. I failed to mention in the very beginning that Mrs. Hein is not able to be with us today, so all of our votes will reflect a seven-person vote. All right, so, we will now move to the special order, the presentation of the Top Magnet Schools of America Awards. Dr. Greggo?
Yes, Madam Chair and School Board Members, I'm very pleased to introduce Mr. Kevin Hendrick, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, who will bring up a special guest that we have, Susan King, who is the past president of the Magnet Schools of America, to present two awards.
Thank you, Dr. Greggo. Good evening, board members, Dr. Greggo and staff members. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to shine a light on some of the great things that are happening in our schools this year. As you know, we have over 100 different programs in our district that are application programs that we're proud of, and each year, the Magnet Schools of America, some of the schools participate in different opportunities to be recognized. And you have heard about some of these recognitions, and tonight, we'd like to present two of those special awards. So I'm going to introduce Susan King, the past president of the Magnet Schools of America. But first, direct your attention to a short video to kick off the presentation.
Hello, I'm Susan King, past president of Magnet Schools of America. It is my pleasure to announce the MSA National Superintendent of the Year. This award recognizes a superintendent for outstanding leadership skills and commitment to improving public school education through the development and implementation of high-quality magnet schools in diverse environments. The 2021 National MSA Superintendent is Dr. Michael Greggo, Pinellas County, Pinellas, Florida. Two years after he was hired, Dr. Greggo led the district to top in Florida and 10th in the nation for districts offering the best choices for parents. And a few years later, the district was named a Ford Next Generation Learning Model Community for preparing students for college, career, and life. Dr. Michael Greggo.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to the entire Magnet Schools of America Board of Directors. It is an incredible honor to be recognized as your Superintendent of the Year. I've always been a passionate supporter of magnet schools and truly believe in the value of providing all students educational choices that align with their interests, talents, and learning styles. And since I came to Pinellas County Schools, we've added nearly 25 magnet programs to expand our offering to more than 80, with more on the horizon. We want all students to have access to programs that excite and engage them, no matter their interest or where they live in our district. In addition to programs, we are continuously investing in our facilities to make sure students have state-of-the-art learning environments, including the Richard O. Jacobson Technical High School, a brand-new school with programs in commercial and digital art, game and SIM programming, nursing, veterinary assisting, marine mechanics, electricity, and building construction technology. We could not make this great progress without the full support of our dedicated school board members, administrators, teachers, magna coordinators throughout the district. I am so thankful to Magnet Schools of America for their support and for recognizing me and Pinellas County Schools for our efforts to provide magnet programs that focus on diversity, innovative curriculum in professional development, academic excellence, leadership, and family and community partnerships. I look forward to our continued collaboration and am honored to be your Magnet Schools of America Superintendent of the Year. Thank you so much.[925.85][925.85][applause]
And now, just like magic, I'm here in person to do the same thing, only this time they actually get the awards. Okay? So, thank you for having me here tonight. It's been my pleasure and my honor to work with Pinellas County on projects in the past. It's been my honor to work with Dr. Greggo on both sides of the bridge. And I pay property taxes in both Pinellas and Hillsborough, so I'm sort of a dual citizen. Okay? I do vote over here, so don't forget about that, okay? I'd like to present first the New and Emerging Award, and I'd like to ask the principal and the AP of that school to come up so they can receive their plaque and their secret envelope.
Secret envelope.
This, it's, it's not often that a district wins awards at both ends of the spectrum. This award is for schools that have only been in existence for about two or three years. So you won that award, that school's beginning its journey, and then Dr. Greggo won his award. So I don't want to say you finished your journey, Dr. Greggo, because I think you still have a little bit of time there. But anyway, so this shows that this school is well on its way to being a successful magnet school. And thank you COVID, I got to visit the school to come over and do the video, so that was just an added plus for me because it is a beautiful, beautiful video that, our school, that video closed our virtual conference, and I received calls and texts all afternoon about the horses. Okay? And I thought, that was so great! And of course, my main friend said, "We couldn't tell which one was the horse." What are you going to do? But anyway, so this lovely plaque will be, the school will display this plaque, and they can continue to apply for Magnet Schools of America Merit Awards. To be even eligible for this, they had to submit an application and first rise to the level of excellence. And then, they won the New and Emerging. So they won on many levels, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
You're so welcome. It is.
Thank you.
So, thank you.[1082.15][1082.15][applause] And then, and then we have this, are you going to come down, Dr. Greggo? Come on down. Come on down. This, this award is one of my favorites when it comes to individual awards, because nothing happens if the leadership at the top is not going to allow you to be there. I think it was you one time that said to me, "You can only go this far if this person here is holding you down." Do you remember saying that?
I suppose so.
[laughing] I make up stuff sometimes. Okay, so this, this, this is to, to make sure that he is recognized for the leadership that he has exhibited in magnet schools. And not just magnet schools, because I think Dr. Greggo totally understands that it's not just magnet schools to have magnet schools. It's magnet schools that improve the whole district, that provide that synergy that's going to work for improvement of the entire district. So, he understands that, and that's what makes a difference, that if you do, if you lead it that way, then that's where it's going to go, and every student is going to be successful. So, this is very heavy. And display that lovingly, okay? And I invite you all to go, oh, I forgot your little secret envelope. I invite you all to go to magnet.edu to look at our new resources and the things we've done. We did a huge pivot, like everyone, to, to prepare workshops that would help our schools. We're doing a grant writing workshop this summer, so there's lots of things going on in our district, and we are aligning all of our trainings to make sure that you can spend your ESIR and CARES money on them. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you.[1201.65][1201.65][applause] And congratulations to the leadership and staff at Richard O. Jacobson Technical High School in Seminole, and congratulations, Dr. Greggo. Very nice.[1215.74][1215.74][applause] All right, we will now move to public comment on agenda items. Members of the public have three opportunities to address the board when we gather for our meetings. The first opportunity is to speak to the public comment on the agenda items. The next opportunity is when the public hearing, which is mostly on policies, and lastly, when the meeting is adjourned, we will remain for public participation when speakers may address items pertaining to the business of the district. At each opportunity for public input, board members are here to listen. This is not a time for discussion or debate. We will not take any formal action on information brought forward unless it is pertaining to an agenda item. However, the board and the superintendent may clarify statements or refer speakers to the proper staff person to help work through the process. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. Please assist us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment by confining your comments to the business of the district and refrain from profanity or intemperate or rude comments. Thank you very much. Ms. Simonetti, do we have any speakers on comments pertaining to the agenda?
Board members and Dr. Greggo, we have five speakers this evening for specific agenda items. Our first is Brian Ongst for Consent Number 7.50.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Greggo, Brian Ongst, 625 Court Street, Clearwater, on behalf of Hammer Consulting LLC. I know you don't usually hear from land use attorneys at school board hearings, but as a product of Pinellas County Schools, it's an honor to be here, addressing you tonight on this agenda item. I think the last time I addressed the board was at the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Committee, which would have been about 20 years ago. So, it is an honor to be here. I did send a letter to Dr. Greggo that I asked him to share with the board dated April 30th to provide you some perspective of my clients on this process, their response to the solicitation for the purchase and sale of the classroom and site. And just to reiterate a little bit that was contained in that letter, it's been the longstanding goal of the school board, at least the legislative policy of previous boards, to sell this property. In May of 2019, it was appraised at $2.89 million, and in January of 2020, the board unanimously approved Dr. Greggo and Mr. Herbeck to list the property for sale on the solicit bids. Several bidders, I believe at least four, responded, and my client was selected as the most qualified bidder, bidding $3.35 million. In February, we submitted a purchase and sale agreement. There were some very minor revisions. In May, there were some additional revisions provided, and my client has basically been ready to sign the purchase agreement for over a year. Having said that, we're very aware of, and we're very sensitive to, the board's desire to give the WK Preservation Group time to try to raise funds to purchase the property. And that's why you haven't heard from us yet, because we've been very, very patient, we've been communicating in good faith with the administration, with Dr. Greggo, and with Mr. Herbeck. So we're not here tonight to oppose you entering a contract with WK Preservation Group, but I wanted to point out that initially, we were told this would come back to us in October if the funds weren't raised. Then we were told there were three specific milestones WK had to meet, which included getting a legislative funding this year, which they did not do, or the property would be, you know, entered into a contract with my client. And now we're being told that it's going to be another year. So at this point, what we'd like to do is we'd like to say, we are a great partner for the school board and the school district. We want to pay you what you believe is fair market value for property that you no longer need, that no longer serves a public educational purpose. It does not have to be this property. We would like consensus from the board, given the about 16 months of good faith patience that my client has demonstrated, and the fact that we were the highest bidder for this site, to allow the administration to begin negotiating with us for potentially purchasing a different site. That would obviously be contingent on the administration thinking that we were providing above fair market value, and the site no longer being needed and being able to be declared surplus. But we can't wait any longer on this site. We're happy to be the backup offer for this site, but we'd like to get into business with you now on another site. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, and...
Our next, our next speaker is Beth Hovind for Consent 7.50.
You see out in the hallway? No Beth, all right.
Our next speaker is Mark Clutho for Consent Numbers 7.43, 7.44, and 7.45.
Good evening.
Mark Clutho, Largo. 743, 744, 745. All buildings that are all wrong. And what do we have? We have cause and effect. Headlines: Huge Changes Needed to Keep Nature/Earth Okay. A Florida-like Summer in the Heat in the Heart of Alaska. Greenland's Ice Sheet in Constant State of Loss. A Troubling Fawn: The Arctic Is Entering Uncharted Territory as It Warms. Only Big Steps Will Save Earth. Climate Change Makes U.S. Even Hotter. Goodbye to Glaciers Studies Shows Gravity of Melting Ice. Well, that's what happens when you make stupid buildings. And then, as at the last meeting, I had this article about Casa Pasiva, where they're doing the retrofit of these old buildings in New York and cutting the heating and cooling costs by 80%. I'm talking about old buildings, not new structures like what you're doing here, which would have been a much easier proposition and less costly. So what we have here are dumb steps to further all of these examples of what's coming. You ignoring science so the planet burns. And it's going to go faster. Maybe some of you saw Attenborough on 60 Minutes Sunday night. Yeah. Painting not so a pretty picture. Somebody's responsible, and when you ignore science, that somebody is you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Hovind for Consent Number 7.50.
Good evening.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Beth Hovind, and I'm the Board Secretary for the WK Preserve. We want to thank you for your dedication to preserving this 13-plus acres currently referred to as the WK Preserve. We are impressed with your faith in our organization to build the community response necessary to complete our contract with you. With the assistance of the Pinellas Community Foundation and other foundations, we are confident that we will be able to raise sufficient funds to purchase the property, dedicated to the county, and permanently preserve this land for all future generations. It will forever be assigned to your students and your staff that the Pinellas It will forever be a sign to your students and your staff that the Pinellas County School Board is a leader in preserving natural forests in Pinellas County. Years from now, the property will still be available in its natural state of preservation. Again, thank you. We're holding a press conference on June 15th, and we are hoping that the Pinellas School Board will support this press conference and support our efforts. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dawn Richter for Consent Number 7.50.
Welcome.
Hey. You guys rock. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts on giving us time to purchase the West Klosterman Preserve. We entered into the contract with you all, and we're going to, I'm here to just, well, thank you, number one. Number two, to assure you that we're going to do our darn best to fulfill the contract and to purchase the property. We're working with state and Pinellas Future PFC, I think is foundation for, to solicit donations, and you did the right thing. You did the right thing, and I hope we do the right thing for you all. So, I just wanted to say thank you. And I wanted to finish up with a little quote from the Dalai Lama, and it just says morally speaking, "We should be concerned for our whole environment. We need to teach people that the environment has a direct bearing on our benefit." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker on specific agenda items is Broderick Huserl for 7.50.
Good evening.
Dr. Grego, members of the board and guests, my name is Broderick Huserl, Chairman of the WK Preservation Group Incorporated. I'm here today personally to thank you for allowing our group extra time to complete its current mission of assuring that the property called the WK Preserve located on the north side of West Klosterman Road remains in its current, natural, untouched form. I am confident that our group will be successful in raising the necessary funds on or before the agreed date. We have some very good leads and are going to continue to work hard on a daily basis to complete our mission as quickly as possible. Thank you once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Before we know that, usually we refer people to staff if there were some concerns, but since Mr. Herbeck is sitting here, I'd like to make sure that the two of you get in touch with each other, Brian Ongst and Mr. Herbeck, and see if there is any property or what we can do, and then the board can decide at that point which way they want to go. All righty, good, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we now move to unfinished business. We have public hearing to consider the repeal of the board rules regarding face coverings effective at 5:00 PM on June 9th. This is the second reading, and so we will be able to have speakers at this point, but do we have a motion? Okay, Mr. Dudley, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Long, second it. And Mr. Kupersky, would you like to explain the process that we're going through for the second hearing?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam. Let me turn my microphone. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair and board members. This is the second reading, as you noted. If you recall, back in the fall, the school board adopted an emergency rule in early August to allow the schools to open with the face covering policy. During that 90-day period that that emergency rule was in effect, the board then went through the traditional rulemaking process of two readings, and culminating on November 20th of 2020, simultaneous with the expiration of the emergency policy, the board conducted a public hearing and voted in the more formal, traditional board rule. And at this point in time, you are now sitting in front of you on the table is a recommendation by the superintendent to repeal the face covering rule colloquially known as the mask policy. So, just as any other policy we do, many of which go unnoticed, this is no different procedurally. And so, about a month ago, on May 11th, you had your first reading. As we discussed at that time, it was really not the board's prerogative to do away with the policy on that date, because under the law, you needed to have two readings and a public hearing. But that leads us to today, and today is the second reading and the public hearing. So, a board approval of the recommendation today will in fact repeal the school board rule regarding face covering and place the board in the status quo ante, meaning that you would be back in the place as if you never adopted the face covering rule. So, with that, we're here to answer any questions, but procedurally, you will hear from the public in the public hearing after the introduction of the agenda item, and then the board can have a debate and then a vote.
Very good, thank you. Board members, any questions? All right, Dr. Grego?
I'd like to make a comment or two, and then listen to the speakers and certainly the board. I think the pastor opened up the meeting in such a great way by saying that last year, we didn't know exactly what we were faced with, and that we had to continue to change and be patient with one another and try to understand the health and safety and well-being. Certainly, today, you have before you a recommendation by myself and staff that we rescind or terminate the face mask policy. But let it not be lost that we were very successful in maintaining and keeping schools open throughout this entire school year. It is very fitting that as we end our school year tomorrow, that we kept the safety and well-being of all of our employees and our students, our teachers every day on the front line, food service workers, bus drivers, in the forefront of our minds in terms of what we should do and could do. Let it also be a comfort that we are in constant, not say constant daily, I mean, but our medical team has been tremendous along the way and been recognized, not only in Pinellas County, but in other districts for the service they've provided us. And you know what? There's no playbook for this pandemic. There was no playbook for right and wrong answers. We went with whatever we thought was the very best for the greatest number of people. With employees and others, we're well over 100,000 people that rely on us all to make the decisions for the betterment of all people, not some, but all. And it was also a year where we saw very keenly that in any decision, there was always opposition to some degree, but we had to continually try to look and seek for the betterment of all. And so, I want to say thank you to the board as we end our school year tomorrow. Thank you to all of the employees for doing that also, and for their patience and for understanding that, yes, we'll be wiser each time we look back and we can make different decisions, but we made the decisions based on the information that we had, the best information that we could, and we moved on that. And I think as a state, I know we've been very successful at everything that, in getting our students back to school. Just for the board's notice, I will continue to send you updates from the Department of Health in Pinellas, specifically from Dr. Cho. I sent you an update on very positive news a week and a half ago, as of the end of May, where the seven case, the seven-day average case count was 55 per day, the lowest since the very beginning of this pandemic, even lower than before testing was so prevalent. And also, the seven-day positivity rate of 2.3, which I believe continues to go in the right direction. So, the vaccinations, I continue to report through Dr. Cho to this board. As the percentages of people being fully vaccinated continues to rise, it is encouraging that over 50% of 12 and above, obviously, the 12 to 15 is the lowest, it's around 10% because that just started, especially with the two-dose vaccine. So, I'll continue to keep you apprised. As we've met with all of our principals, as we begin our summer bridge program, June 21st, we've consulted and had conversations. It went very smoothly. In terms of how we conduct that, obviously, with the boards, hopefully, we're sending the face masks, the face masks are not mandatory. They're at the choice of parents and choice of students, and also our teachers and adults in the building. We'll continue to enhance our cleaning and sanitizing protocols. We'll continue to fund and not have a burden of our schools to do that. We'll continue to practice social distancing, as I think we're all getting used to those ways of life, even outside of schools. We'll continue to provide school nursing services to our, I'm speaking specifically about our summer bridge program, and I'll speak more keenly about the population of the summer bridge program, which I'm very excited about, as where you are. Also, we'll have buses on the road this summer as we're transporting students for our summer bridge program. We'll continue the cleaning and social distancing even on our buses. We'll continue to have our COVID team here, led by Sarah O'Toole, and she's done a remarkable job, day in and day out, and long hours of trying to care and answer questions of the principals. So, a lot of things are moving on, but I think it's time as we cross and transition with the really good news of the low contagious rates in our community. Also, Dr. Cho informs me that as Pinellas County, we have the highest vaccination rates and the lowest contagious rates, and so those two combinations are really making Pinellas County, and he and the county is very thankful for all that we've done, all that you've done over the last 10 or 12 months, and certainly of getting through this school year. By having our students in school, we, without a doubt, we're the key ingredient to bringing our workers back to work and our community to the greatest sense of normalcy that we can have. We see that all the time, whether it be a hurricane. Opening schools is the greatest sense of normalcy in a community can feel. If you doubt that, ask a community where their children are still not back at school on a regular basis. Whether they have face masks or not, they're not back. And so, that is a huge plus and huge congratulations to this board and to this entire community for going through a year that, like no other, but certainly one that we've all grown a little bit more patient, understanding, considerate, and kind to one another, and I hope that sticks and stays even past this time. So, thank you, board, for your support, myself and staff for this year, and also, I look forward to a great and productive summer, as we have record numbers of students who will be showing up at our schools this summer. So, I look for, certainly, you know where I stand on this, and the recommendation is before you. If you have any other questions, I know I spoke a little bit beyond the one policy, but I think it's all in context with everything that we've gone through this year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have speakers?
Board members and Dr. Grego, we have 34 speakers signed up for the public hearing. Our first speaker is Shawna Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I do realize that you are going to vote to repeal the mask mandate today. I think the reason most of us are here is we don't trust, moving forward, that that's what you're going to keep. And we also don't trust that there won't be some type of combination where if you get the vaccine, you don't have to wear a mask, but if you don't get the vaccine, you're going to be segregated and you'll have to wear the mask. So, I know that's one of the reasons I'm here to talk today. Also, I didn't get to say everything I wanted to say the last time, so kind of here to finish that up. So, I'd like to get to the point where I feel like you can earn our trust back, but I think we're a long way from that. So, last time I was here, four weeks ago, I told you how I truly believed that when you got into this line of work, you had the best intentions at heart. You wanted to be here for the children. You really wanted to see them excel. You wanted to see Pinellas County Schools rise to the top, and I appreciate that. And I know that's where your heart initially came from, but I said this last time, and I'll say it again. Somewhere along this way, those intentions were lost, and our children have been failed. And there's a generation of children who are now psychologically and physically harmed from the decisions you have made. So, though I appreciate you're going to repeal this act, I'm very, very concerned that moving forward, throughout the summer, maybe numbers tick up. Hey, that's great, Dr. Grego, that the numbers have ticked down a week and a half ago. Why didn't we repeal the act a week and a half ago? But I won't go off on a tangent. Regardless, what happens if the numbers tick up? Is that temporary? We're going to see how the summer goes? All the summer, you boom, you're just going to mandate masks again? So, again, I say this because I don't trust you, and I want to trust you. I had so much other stuff I was going to say, but that's what came out. So, I'm going to leave you with this, because this is what really has been resting on my heart for the last four weeks. I'm sure that many of you sang this song. I can tell that as a youth yourself, you were probably singing this song around school and making a big deal out of it and being tough with it. Perhaps that song even drew some of you into education. So, in the words of Pink Floyd, I am going to twist them just a tad, but we don't need your education. We don't need your thought control. No dark sarcasm in our classroom. School board teachers leave our kids alone. All in all, they're just another brick in your wall. If you don't wear your mask, you can't play with your friends. How can you play with your friends if you don't wear your mask? Please earn our trust back. Please keep these children unmasked, and don't make vaccines a part of the mask requirement and remove it from the dress code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gracie Nelson.
Can we move the microphone down first?
Sorry, Daddy usually did that.
Oh, there is one there? Hold on.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, okay. Good, thank you. Good evening.
Hello. Hello again. I'm surprised masks are gone in the trash yet. You know, I'm tired of what you're doing to my friends and other kids. When I'm going to school, I always see kids on their phones, not playing with the other kids, and they're always six feet in masks, and it's your fault. You're causing fear. Please listen to me, okay? For God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind. Stop listening to the devil, listen to God, our Holy Father. Be baptized in the Holy Spirit. Unmask my friends. People are protesting for us. Thank you for fighting for freedom.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is our next, okay, our next speaker?
Our next speaker is David Happy.
They were going to call them together.
Did you sign up for both?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Carly O'Brien?
Okay, then let's go ahead. Okay, and what's her name?
Carly O'Brien.
Carly O'Brien, all right, honey. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Carly. When I go to school, I am forced to wear masks. It's harder to focus, and it gives me a headache. I also have to stay six feet away from my friends. This year, I changed schools. When I was forced to wear a mask and distance, it was very hard to make new friends. God did not create us to be guided by fear. It's time people start using their intuition and stop being guided by fear. When you are in fear, there is more chance you'll get sick than when you use your intuition. I mean, systems on, masks off.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Our next speaker is David Happy.
Following information, good evening, is 100% factual, and you can fact-check every single point I'm about to make about how wrong you've been. Call it malfeasance, misfeasance, neglect of duty and competence, whatever you want to call it, every single one of you would be subject to recall over just one of the actions that I'm about to tell you. You were wrong to ever exclude parents from the campuses. You were wrong to ever have Dr. Cho advise the Pinellas County School Board, since he has a demonstratable financial conflict of interest that none of you have ever asked him about. Further, maybe because of that, Dr. Cho was wrong on just about every single recommendation he gave you, which now you can tell with the Fauci emails, and I'm sure that you've read. You were wrong to ever mask the children, and we know that from the Fauci emails. You were wrong to blame the Florida Department of Education for your personal mask fetishes when 50% of the school districts across Florida... when 50% of the school districts across Florida never forced mask their children like you did. You were wrong to deny parental determination as was allowed under Pinellas County State of Emergency. You were wrong to hold a private work session with improper notice on your change of venue. And you're wrong to record even today, your work sessions, but not allow them to be broadcast to people that want to understand what you're doing under the cloak of darkness. You were wrong to ignore Governor DeSantis's executive order to unmask the children and to end the state of emergency. You were wrong when your attorney stated you are not a subsection, a government agency, that we just didn't have enough time to get you in front of a judge. You were wrong to allow the Pinellas County School Secretary to grossly misstate the statistics. You were wrong to not challenge Dr. Kennedy when she misstated there was an increase in juvenile hospitalizations in Pinellas County and stated that the UK variant was a cause. It's 100% erroneous and you can get the actual statistics, but you never questioned Dr. Kennedy's statistics. You were wrong to appoint a 20-member ideological curriculum committee that is comprised exclusively of ideological liberals and registered Democrats. It doesn't reflect the diversity of the district, was never open for parental involvement and has members who openly post racist, critical race theory on their Facebook pages. You were wrong to have a medical advisory committee of 11 people, including three that have zero medical expertise, including one union rep on that panel and one employee of the Tampa newspapers. You were wrong to allow the Pinellas County School Board to enter a memorandum of understanding with the teachers' union that allowed the teachers' union to dictate the medical operating policies. So today I filed a grievance with the state of Florida against your assistant superintendent and the two union representatives for entering into this illegal agreement. They're not doctors. They're not licensed to practice medicine. And if you ever allow a similar agreement to be entered again, I'll file suit against each one of you for the same cause.
Thank you. All right, I am going to stop. Our, our rules are that we don't clap or have any interruption. I allowed it when the students were up here speaking because I thought that was a little different. But if I would ask you now not to applaud, you can give them thumbs up, you can give little jazz hands, whatever you want to do to show support. Thank you.
Our next speaker is May Chang.
Good evening.
Thank you, David. Blessings and prayers to all. All facts, all science, intuition, love, these are how we want our children to, to be guided, not by fear. Fear is a liar. And I know that many of you are just pawns in the system. And I just want you to know that there is a way through any block. I don't know if you're being threatened or I don't know what it is that you, that you need to, you know, support these unconscionable rules that are destroying children and families. Superintendents and teachers' unions across the nation set CDC guidelines. And really I want to thank everyone that, that doesn't go by any of the mainstream media. CDC, all these organizations are owned by pharmaceutical companies, so they are obviously not reliable. And anyone that's just complying, you are being part of a problem. And so thank you all that are truly being aware and being a part of solution for the future of this country, even this world. And last time I was here, I, I wanted to share this and I'm going to share it again. I sent a letter to Superintendent Greggo regarding the mask wearing, distancing, excessive use of toxic hand sanitizer and what are we teaching our children? Obviously none of it is science-based. It's just common sense, a lot of it. And then I received an automatically generated email reporting an incident of bullying. And it said, "Thank you for submitting this report." It looks as if you're reporting support for an incident, incidence of bullying, harassment or teen dating violence and abuse. So yeah, we all know it's, you know, bullying. This is not even, you know, it's not even up for debate. But I will say that these Fauci emails, I actually hope that, I mean, there's just all this evidence against everything that's happening here and, and more and more people know it. Those Fauci emails, they absolutely prove this fake pandemic, all of the, this mask horrible, horribly, horribly abusive, unhealthy, unnecessary masking, distancing, just pure physical, emotional, mental abuse. So I hope that those emails will actually be a, a game changer and that you, you know, whether you want to or not, I, I don't know what your circumstances, but you will really not be able to. And just everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to say, please, when you vote to do this for the mask, make sure that you don't reinstate it back when school starts again. Because I've heard talk, other parents have heard talk, that, oh, we're just going to go and see what the summer does. And then when school starts, there's going to be another vote and there could be put back. We, us parents don't want that. We want to continue our right to our choice for the kids to wear the mask. You know my story, you know my daughter's story, you know what she's been through with the bullying. I'm going to tell you something that I have spoke with. Dr. Greggo, I'd appreciate if you give me attention because I have emailed you and called you multiple times and I haven't got a response from you with everything that's going on with my daughter. My daughter, when we went to fill out work, I had to get her into counseling. When she filled out the paperwork, there was a question that asked if she thought the world would be better off without her? And my daughter answered yes. Why? Because of all the bullying that she's gotten and she can't get, identify some of the kids that, because they were wearing a mask. It has been 13 weeks, guys, 13 weeks, that my daughter has been bullied over her wearing a Trump mask. And then on Friday, a teacher called her at DIC, finished the rest of it head. Yes, OPS has been notified, but unacceptable. Then the week, the week before that, Friday before that, my daughter had a tennis ball and the teacher's like, "Can I have your tennis ball?" She goes, "If you give me an A." So he wrote A on a sticky note. And she goes, "Oh, my mom's going to be proud of me." The same teacher says, "Oh, she'll be proud of you for the first time ever." That is being told to my 12-year-old child who's been bullied for 13 weeks. I am beyond upset. I am heartbroken. My daughter thinks she'll be better off dead. Do you really want my daughter as a statistic? You guys need to do something about the policies. I know this is mask, but this ties into it. There were death threats made to her and the students weren't identified because they were wearing a mask. She will no longer go to Seminole Middle School next year. But I tell you what, this better not happen next year because I will personally hold everyone responsible. My daughter has been, and I tell you over the summer, if my daughter ends up dead, it's your guys' fault for not changing the policies soon enough. Your fault.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sweet.
Good evening. Before my time starts, I have something for the superintendent. Can I give it to him or have somebody?
Yeah, if you, okay.
Time up? Okay. So that letter is the intent to withdraw both my children from Pinellas County School indefinitely. I am going to be pursuing whatever litigation I can. I have a recorded conference that my son's fifth grade teacher used fear to try to teach her children to wear the mask properly. She thought it was okay. She admitted that on NPR radio, driving into school that morning, that she learned that a first grader in Minnesota had died of coronavirus and thought that that would be a great teachable moment for her fifth graders. So she told them that children were dying and so that they needed to wear their masks properly. So not only did she not follow the policies that you guys have listed and controversial material in the libraries where you have to ask other adults if it's deemed controversial has to go to the principal so the principal can give you a piece of paper to send home to sign. And that wasn't used. And that's only one of the things that my son can remember. My son also has ADHD. So what he also says is multiple times a week, class gets shut down by this teacher so that she can re-educate onto the dangers of coronavirus. That's multiple, multiple, multiple interruptions. I have on video the principal saying that she cannot account for how much time has been wasted in school due to having to stop to re-educate the children onto the dangers of coronavirus when, as you know, and as the information has come out, children aren't getting that sick. So for a teacher to pull one instance out that was a poorly written CNN, Fox News website, NPR news piece that has no information as to why this kid actually died or anything because we know for a child to die of it, it's extenuating circumstances because it's so low. So to pull that one little thing out to push fear to a child, who does that? Who does that? But more and more, you're seeing that teachers are doing really weird stuff right now. You're failing the teachers as much as you failed the kids. The teachers have nobody to talk to but these kids in front of them all the time. That's it. And you're talking about repealing the mask mandate? You won't allow parents in school. I had to get called to the school because my son forgot his backpack. I don't know how he did that. But they asked me to come bring it. And when I brought it to the school and tried to open the door, they called security on me because I was bringing him his backpack after they told me that they wanted me to bring it. So these are things that are going to continue because everybody is so afraid of us parents because we're finding out what's going on. But more than that, these teachers have nobody to talk to but these kids. They are scared. There are people who are terrified of dying and they have nobody to talk to. You need to figure out what's going to happen to these teachers when they're terrified that these kids are coming to school next year without masks on. Have you thought about, you've got teachers spraying Lysol, teachers doing other things? Have you thought about the repercussions of what some of these scared teachers are going to do once these faces are in front of them and they're terrified? My children will never be in Pinellas County schools because of what you guys have shown us over all of this time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa McNeil.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lisa McNeil. I wasn't planning on coming here today originally until last minute, so I did not plan anything. I do want to say I am an inactive licensed registered nurse. The reason I am inactive and I am working to reactivate it is because I do have autoimmune diseases. Unfortunately, I have to wear this mask in here and I already have problems from my meds I took that destroyed my lungs, so excuse me. I will tell you that I am here because I have two high schoolers at two different high schools in South St. Pete. And I want to make sure that my children do not have to return with masks next year. You would think I would be afraid because of my autoimmune disease and I am actually disgusted that the children, if they still have to wear masks because something happens with the numbers this summer. It is true that this was overinflated. I have several friends that are doctors and nurses in the medical field who will tell you the same thing. Yes, I lost four friends that graduated with me in 1994 from Pinellas Park High School this year. But you know what? The vaccine is out. You had, teachers all had a chance to be vaccinated. The original fear was that people who worked there would get sick and die. And I have friends who were chemo patients that were teachers in the system. And yes, I worried. I worried my kids would bring it home. But I need you to know that children under age 12, if they do get, come up positive, if they actually have any major symptoms, it's because they have other health problems and comorbidities from something else, not from COVID. It just happens that COVID triggers those things. Everyone has a choice. They can get vaccinated, they can wear a mask, but now there's no reason to force anybody to go to school anymore because age 12 and up can get the vaccine and under 12 does not have problems unless they already have other medical issues. They can wear masks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dawn Peters.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we elect you, all of you, we all elected you to manage our funds, to manage our children's education. But when did you stop listening to us? You know, as soon as you guys got in your seats, you don't listen to us anymore. We come here and speak. We email you, we call you. We come here in person, our children speak. When, when did you stop listening to us? Once you got in your seats, that was the end of it? I, I don't understand that. When is our voice supposed to be able to impact what is going on in our schools? You've taken us out of the school. Good job. You guys did that really quick. I was so actively involved in my kids' schools from the time they were in preschool all the way up until you kicked me out last year. Nope, you can't go into school anymore, Ms. Peters. All my kids' teachers loved me because I helped. I didn't even, I helped with the kids that needed help. So the teachers were free to do what they needed to do, which was teach. You guys have woken a beast. It's our fault that we've gotten here, but we're here now and we all know what's going on and we're all watching and we all want to make active change. We want to participate. It is your job to teach our children academics only. Manners, manners are great. That's it. Nothing social, nothing political, none of those things should be taught to my children or spoken to my children unless they are actually in a politics class. That's where that ends. There should be none of those things. COVID measures. You guys are talking about the masks, but what about the COVID measures? The social distancing needs to stop. The kids sitting spaced apart at lunch needs to stop. Kids only being able to talk to one friend needs to stop. Masks are just a small part of it. There are so many parts of these COVID measures that need to go away. The parents, we're, we're going to be in the schools. We have a right to be in school. It's always supposed to be that way. And those of us who want to participate and be involved should be able to. We work and we work for free. Take advantage of that. But these COVID measures all need to go away. I don't even, masks are masks, fine. Vote against masks, they can go away. There's more to this than that and we know that there's more to this than that. So you guys, social distancing needs to stop, although on the buses, they probably love that, but we just, we don't need any of this anymore. Our kids are afraid, they're not seeing their friends, they're not seeing people's faces, they're not seeing anything. You guys know this, you've heard it all. Let's get rid of this COVID team. COVID, everybody who wants to be vaccinated is vaccinated. The numbers have dropped and we don't want to pay their salaries anymore. Put those taxes back into our school, that, their paychecks, put them back in our schools. I don't think anything else needs to be said about that. I mean, we have a right to be in school, the parents have a right to be there.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Fox.
Good evening.
Hello. So here we are at the end of the school year. It's a good time to reflect on what we've learned over the last year. Seems the school board puts teachers first, well above the children. The children are actually last, maybe an afterthought. Contrary to what you say, your actions spoke very loudly for you this year. I can understand at the beginning of the year, this was unchartered territory and there was much to be learned. But eventually the science was very clear, children were the least affected by COVID and they were not vectors for spreading it. Yet you still turned the schools into something that more resembled prison. Masking the children and forcing rigid social distancing measures throughout the day and barely letting them get a drink of water. All of this without any consideration of the negative effects these policies might have. Clearly not thinking about what might be best for the children when new information became available. So magically, following the science and experts, tomorrow- tomorrow, we can ditch all this nonsense when your contract expires. The school board lets itself be led by experts who have financial conflicts and dares not ask any questions or show any curiosity as to what you're told. Even though concerned, concerned parents flooded you with mountains of credible information, data, statistics, and studies, you abdicated your critical thinking responsibility and just did what you were told, seemingly without question. This is disappointing at best, but personally, I think it's negligent. A critical thinker gets information from many sources and uses reason and judgment to make decisions. A critical thinker does not make decisions based on a single source of information. And most of all, a critical thinker does not make decisions based on fear. The school board thinks it knows better than parents, what, better than parents, what is best for their children. In overriding the county guidelines where parents got to choose whether their children should wear a mask or not, the board showed great disdain for parents and their responsibility for medical decisions for their own children. And you lecture others about bullying, but have no problem with teachers bullying children about masks and indeed bully the, these parents, us parents, that come to speak to you by interrupting us if our mask is down too low, even though it's more than sufficient social distancing here and the masks are just senseless theater. The school board has created an atmosphere whereby teachers who do not agree with your policies are not comfortable with sharing their disagreement unless they do so anonymously. Others have had to come read students for those teachers as they worried about retribution. The school board accepts no responsibility for any of the harm that they have perpetrated on the children this past year. I guess that's why you didn't question the experts. It gives you plausible deniability. In my mind, it's culpable negligence. Most importantly, what we learned during this past year is just how terribly the school board has failed the children and parents of Pinellas County. The upside is that there are a good many parents who no longer blindly trust that you are looking out for the best interests of their children and will no longer sit on the sidelines and assume it's all good. And my last point, you really do need to get rid of the social distancing over the summer bridge and for next year. That's just silliness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Julie Ephron McAllister.
Good evening.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Short and sweet. August 24th, 2020 through today, June 8th, 2021, one school year. Nine months of not seeing their teacher smile. Thirty-six weeks of struggling to breathe behind fabric. One hundred seventy-eight days with no field trips. One thousand two hundred forty-six hours without seeing their friends' faces. Seventy-four thousand seven hundred sixty minutes of indoctrinated fear. Yes, I did the math. How much longer do our children have to wait to breathe freely again? How much longer until parents are allowed to make medical decisions for their families? This power trip has gone on for far too long and we're all so happy it's ending today.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Ephron.
I believe there's a microphone on the. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mark from fourth grade. And I think you should stop making us wear masks because they really irritate me and give me a lot of headaches. And it separates me from my friends because we have to social distance. And did you know at school to play tag with our friends instead of touching them, how you would normally play tag, you have to clap? And that might not sound bad, but we also have to wear masks while running around at recess. I found myself sweating under my mask all the time and then I have to wear that same sweaty mask for the rest of the day. It's disgusting.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm here to focus on wellness because I'm a health and wellness professional and that's my, my specialty, my passion. It's really what I care most about. And I have looked back at your website, probably, I would say, a few months ago. And I noticed that your wellness policy hadn't been updated and it's since 2017. And I found that to be an issue because it seemed to be that you're focusing on a lot of the wrong types of preventative measures for people with these masks, but not actually focus on, focusing on the things that are actually going to keep people healthy and well. So there's a big difference there. And I think my main point today is that I just want to bring to the table that you all in making this decision today, I'm sure you're going to drop the policy because Hillsborough has already done so and Pasco has already done so. And so it's just a matter of you now following suit. But I think what I'm most concerned about and what a lot of the other parents are concerned about and the students and the teachers is that you're going to possibly put that back into place if, if, you know, numbers may change or there's a spike. And we don't want to see that happen. You know, so, so we don't, we don't want to see that happen. And I think we need to be, and you need to be as a board, you need to be putting things into place now to make sure that your staff, the entire Pinellas County School, you know, teachers, you need to take on measures that you can actually teach these teachers how to be well and healthy and focus on their immune systems and strengthening their immune systems and actually focus on that for the children. I talked to a nurse not long ago and she brought up something really great. Look, if we had used these, the funding that you got to buy all these ridiculous masks that are an illusion of safety, this is an illusion of safety, because it doesn't actually do anything to keep the individual internally healthy. So if we had taken that money and we had used that to say, get, install sinks in every classroom so that children could actually just wash their hands more, that was a conversation with a good nurse friend of mine. That would have been such a brilliant use of funding that we could actually then sustainably see that, you know, protecting our children and our teachers long-term, you know? Just things like that, even the, the school lunches and the food programs and your food education, nutrition, education. These kinds of things are actually practical and we can do this and we can take and, you know, move forward with solutions. But the, I mean, these obviously need to go. I think we can all agree now that it's time and we've, we've come to see that the, the data is there to prove that this doesn't actually make a difference. But there are things that we can do that can make a difference. So that's what I wanted to bring to the table today mostly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mila Williams.
It's Mila.
Mila.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Hi, my name is Mila. I go to a school where I have not had to wear masks. We are healthy and happy. We do not.
We do not wear masks. Wear masks.
Wear masks because of health reasons. Masks are not healthy. Masks can make kids sick. Masks make kids sad because they can't breathe or smile. I want all kids to have a better year without masks.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Unmask us, kids. We need freedom.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Alicia Reeves.
Welcome.
So you have successfully kept our children masked for an entire school year. Well, I'm here today, like many, to talk about the masks and to also convey a message to you. We're coming for your seats. You have abused our children long enough. This is coming to an end. Soon, you will no longer keep our kids masked. You will no longer keep them six feet apart. You will no longer continue to teach our children any forms of your political ideologies, just to name a few of your hidden agendas. We've got your number. You see, you people up there will not be doing this anymore because we're coming for your seats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Snyder.
So this is the first time I've been here. My name is Richard Snyder. I'm a Pinellas County community citizen. I have raised three children in Pinellas County with my wife, two of which did get to participate in the school board program. One was homeschooled the entire time. My youngest child got to endure it through disabilities and just graduated with the homeschooling program. But I wanted to come in. As I walked in, you guys have a nice logo out there. It says 100% student success. I also had a term that I had to deal with with my son all the time. Free and appropriate education. I think hiding behind policies is getting us out of the fact of what you guys are elected to do. Having the friendly reminder that you're an elected citizen, which makes you just as important as we are out here. The masks don't work. There's no science proof. You could go into any one of your science classrooms and talk about the scientific method and you could prove it that it's wrong. You guys need to worry about what the citizens, including yourselves, really think about this subject. You need to think about it before you stand on policy and talk about how many times it takes to remove something. Does it take as long to implement it? Do you take as much time to think about it? You're injuring our children. You're causing more harm than you realize. Any one of us, when we walk out of this room, in your private, do you keep the mask on? Do you worry about who touched the door handle before you? This is not the only way to spread it. Do you worry about the person that walks out of the bathroom? But you're worried about my children, your own grandchildren, your own children, how close they sit to somebody when it's already been proven they're not likely to get it. So I would appreciate if you guys would take it into consideration and get rid of the masks. Don't even try to attempt to bring them back next year. There's still no proof to support it. And let our children be children.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Snyder.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Snyder. Let me see.
Mr. Snyder, Mr. Snyder, can you please put on your face covering? Thank you. The board will be voting this evening whether to repeal it, but it's still in effect right now. Thank you.
And I am here to speak about the masks like many others. Do you realize?
Can you please cover your nose and mouth? Thank you. Appreciate it.
You all work for me. Let me make that clear. Every one of you work for me. I elected you all. I elected each and every one of you. Do you realize that what you're doing here, having children wearing a face mask? Do you realize that having children wearing masks in class is wrong? Do you realize, every one of you, the medical tyranny you all have committed? This is a disgrace to my county, myself, and everybody else in it. The choice you guys, the vote you guys made to vote for children, for children to wear masks is inappropriate because every story I have listened to about it has caused more harm than good. The whole bullying thing with not, people not being able to be identified is beyond ridiculous. Children getting bullied over this, really? Is this the type of school board that we have? To have the logo that says we're all about the students and then the last thing we have is our school board causing a lot of medical tyranny and a lot of harm. Remove the mask policy because we're coming for your seats if you don't resign and we will vote you guys out ACP. Anyway. Yeah, I don't understand why you guys mask your children, blah, blah, blah. Let me see. And the fact that you guys are explicitly, the thing you guys were doing two years ago, trying to explicitly sexualize children to the way you want them. How about we go back to being a quote, neutral school board, teach them their stuff, be respectful each and every one of you, and let mom and dad make the decision for their kids? Or let the families all make.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angela Dubach.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Angela Dubach. I'm the chapter chair of Moms for Liberty here in Pinellas. Yes, I said liberty, you know, as in freedoms that you're taking away from our children. I'm here today on behalf of concerned parents, grandparents, family members, and taxpaying Pinellas residents. What I have seen in the last past year and a half has been very disturbing. You see, I'm not a mom, but I have many, many kids that I care about and I love and I'm concerned for their future. I have parents telling me that they feel ignored and they simply say, Ange, it doesn't matter anymore because they don't, they don't listen to us and they don't care. And I want answers. Masks, we all know they don't work. And it's unbelievable that we're actually still talking about this. The CDC and fraudulent faulty even said they don't work. But one question I do have about the mask, why were kids being reprimanded for the mask being below their nose? That's absolutely the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. So I wrote to the principal, so did other parents. We all got the same response. It was an emailed template. So it's kind of like giving a concerned parent the middle finger, basically. I also want to know why, last year when school started, there were BLM signs, no justice, no peace signs in the classroom, as well as black kids, don't be afraid to stand up and protest on the board. Why? Why is this allowed? But another child wearing an American flag mask was told to remove it and put on a disposal one. Schools, school boards, teachers, unions, need to stop deciding they know what's best for our children. That's not your job. You guys work for us. It's not the other way around and you don't mess with people's children. And I have a pocket copy of the Constitution right here because clearly I think you all need to read it. I'll leave it out front.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kaia Pert.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Kaia Pert and today I would like to talk to you all about the mask mandate in schools. The reason that some kids are still doing school online is because of the mask mandate. Their parents don't want them wearing a mask for seven hours each day. I am personally going to school in person because I learn better in the classroom environment even with the mask mandate. My parents don't want me wearing the mask either, but it's what we have to do for me to have a better education. I do have a friend that, I go to her house all the time. We don't wear masks, we don't social distance, and we're not spreading anything. She's doing school on Zoom because her parents don't want her wearing the mask for all day. If you made masks in schools optional, I feel like we have lots of students coming back to school in person. Some of the experiences that I face while wearing a mask every day is headaches. I start developing a headache every day around six period and I have it for the rest of the school day, which makes it very hard to concentrate on the lesson. When I get in the car and I'm able to take my mask off, the headache lightly goes away. Within 20 minutes or so, when I get home and I have my mask off, the headache is gone. I do believe this is a side effect of wearing the mask all day. Walking into the 2021, 2022 school year, I would like to see the mask mandate made optional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Carrie Madison.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Madison and I live here in Dunedin. My granddaughter attends Academy Da Vinci and you just heard her speak. I speak to you today as a retired registered nurse. I speak to you today as a retired registered nurse who has worked through numerous epidemics. HIV and AIDS in the eighties, hepatitis C, H1N1, RSV, respiratory syncytial virus, and SARS-1. I understand fear and I also understand having to work through fear. It's scary in the early days when you don't know much about how a virus spreads or how virulent it's going to be. But we are not in that phase of this pandemic right now. We know that children are not at high risk of COVID. We know that the risks of emotional and social isolation are very real and are in fact being manifested in this group. And we know that the learning environment has resulted in dismal test scores and even possibly a generation of lost kids who were turned off from learning at the crucial moment in their development. That aha moment that all of us had when suddenly we realized that reading was fun and that mathematics at least was comprehensible. That moment is the moment that opens up vast opportunities to each child. And it occurs at different times for each child. One thing is certain, however, when a child is discouraged or overwhelmed by their classwork, the effects can ripple throughout their entire lives. We cannot afford to risk the emotional, social, and intellectual development of our children even one more minute. Masking our children hinders their emotional, social, and intellectual development. Am I the only one here who has to ask people to repeat themselves three times before I can understand them? I think not. What about the shy child? The one who won't put their hand up and ask for clarification? They are the one that's at risk. To conclude, you simply cannot reduce the risk of COVID-19 to zero. Everything in life has risks. Life itself demands risk to be lived fully and meaningfully. Now is the time to mitigate the risks to our children's emotional, social, and intellectual development. Stop the mask mandate.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I brought three children through this school system. The last one graduated in 2012. And how grateful I am that I was able to be part of their classroom. And I kudos to that last person that was just here because there was times when I had to approach that teacher with my child to keep them encouraged to be in school and enjoying school. I remember a couple of times, that was the essence of why I walked into a classroom is to keep my children engaged. You know what, all three of them have bachelor's degrees today and actually serve this county, two of them do. And that's not going to happen with this class that you have committed such adassities to this year. It breaks my heart and I'm grateful that I didn't have to walk through this with my three daughters in Pinellas County. Yes, I was in the classroom as a volunteer all the time. Also makes me pissed off that my Constitution means nothing today. That forcing a person to wear a mask without their consent is a violation of the Fourth Amendment. Further gathering vital statistics such as taking one's temperature is a violation of a person's right of privacy. Violation of this protection result in your actions of being reported, hopefully to the US Department of Justice, which is required by law to investigate civil rights violations. Is this not a public place? I know I don't pay dues to come in here, so it's not a private establishment. It's a public establishment who doesn't care about my civil rights. Because you sit on your thrones up there. I didn't realize your thrones were so beautiful recently. I didn't have to spend as much time back here in 2010 and 11 as it didn't seem to be as necessary. And I'm here because there's a large group that do not trust you. That's truth. How can we trust we've been lied to by Fauci that we know now? I've seen the emails, I read the emails. Commissioner Pat Gerard told me that she doesn't do her own research. It's probably what goes on in here too. You guys don't like to do your own research and your teachers. Because I know all my fellow friends and patriots have given you lots of research and yet you kept it to the last day. I have my daughters teaching camps and schools. No one's getting sick. No, they're not getting sick. Their children are getting sick. And you know what, like I said to those commissioners, I said, what if? What if the activation of fight for flight and that stress response is unmeasurable? And the kids start wearing these face masks to hide themselves so that they can't tell they're depressed or they're cutting themselves.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is Robbie Robb present?
Good evening.
Good evening. Here we are again. Seems like month after month we come here and talk about this. I'm glad to know that you're going to be voting on it today, but I along with the other parents would like to express my grave disappointment in the way that this has been handled. Having seen the Fauci emails, have you seen them? Have you seen the Fauci emails? Some of you are shaking your head. If you've seen the Fauci emails, why didn't you send out an email right away saying, this has been a farce, end it now? Why are we even still here? Why are we even still here talking about it? Why isn't it done? Children are not getting sick. Children are out and about with their friends when they're out of school, but when they're in school, they're like little automatons. They hate it. You've heard from them. They want it to end. The parents want it to end. And you're keeping the parents out of the schools? I just saw a notice where the makers of Xantac are being sued because that medication causes all kinds of different cancers. Xantac, something that the pharmaceutical companies and the doctors have pushed on multitudes of Americans. You got a stomach ache, oh, just take a little Xantac, no big deal. It's just like Tylenol and ibuprofen, not that harmful. But it causes bladder cancer, prostate cancer, pancreatic cancer, lung cancer, all the cancers. You might be entitled to a settlement. But you're promoting the vaccine. I know more people that have died from the vaccine than from the illness, if we're talking about COVID. I have my friends whose parents have died from the vaccine, at least six of them. And I don't know anybody that's died from COVID. I hope that you're not pushing this experimental medical treatment. I hope that you're not going to push it on the students when they come back. Leave it to the parents to make the decisions for their students, for their children. They may be your students, but they're their children. And they have the right to make the medical decisions for their own children. You don't have that right. You've heard from many others in the community that are coming after your seats. Like there has been a great awakening in this country. People that have been standing on the sidelines are no longer doing that anymore. We're not going to stand for it anymore. It's time to end it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mark Clutho Largo. It's such a painful, painful effort to put on this mask. And anecdotally, if the mask is not effective, you would think that the flu season wouldn't have turned out like it did. But I don't think that you can have that be like it was. And it's just unbelievable, the propaganda that I've listened to tonight. Lot of Fox News talking points, headaches and such. Just unbelievable. I feel sorry for some people that bring all these things on their poor little existences. It's a tough, tough world. And it amazes me how they come forward with all their scientific fact that is really a bunch of hokum, is the best way to describe it. That's all it is. There would be a lot more people dead if it wasn't for the vaccine, for people washing their hands, for the social distancing, for the mask, for all of these efforts that have been made over the last year. And they're a bunch of dreamers if they think it's anything different.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jordan Lee.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jordan and I'm in fourth grade. In my classroom, there are two people that chew their mask and there's one person that drinks through their mask. And when we go to PE, we don't put our mask on because we're outside. And when we're done doing exercises and running, we have to put our mask back on. Also, yesterday, fifth graders graduated because they had a party. Their parents couldn't even see them have a party and have a good time and no volunteering. They had to do it all online. How sad is that? Some people will wear a mask. Also, some people will wear a mask if you make it optional. Also, I am one of the kids that you laughed at in the secret meeting. And when you say thank you at the end, are you really thank you when we're all here saying all these stuff? And here's some of the things that my friends said. I can't even hear some things that my friends said that they want me to say. I can't breathe through my mask, it's very hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristen Lynn.
Education involves the seeking of facts and learning about what is the truth and what is not. Indoctrination is aimed at influencing people to believe in facts without being able to back up these newfound facts with anything but opinion. You, the Pinellas County School Board, has been indoctrinating our children into believing that they need to wear masks for safety. As stated many, many times before at past meetings and emails, you have been provided accurate, factual, educational information in regards to children and wearing masks. You have chosen to take in the indoctrination approach in handling our minor children. We've made it to the end of the school year and I bet you're saying, wow, we did it. We made these kids wear these masks this whole school year, not educating yourself on factual information, but biased information from your inner circle. Hypocrisy is the practice of engaging in the same behavior activity for which one criticizes another or practice of claiming to have moral standards. Your discrepancy across the entire school district has been nothing but pure, pure hypocrisy. You have put students in isolation rooms because they took their mask off to breathe. You have trespassed parents for stepping foot on their children's campuses. And then other schools, some students walk around freely with their mask around their wrist. You have some students outside with masks on at some schools and then you have some others without. You have some children with plexiglass dividers between them at lunch and at other schools you don't. And then your superintendent and Ms. Cook. You were mask-free at a podium speaking, but yet the students had to wear a mask at the same podium on the same day. The most basic thing parents have asked is our choice for our children in regards to the mask. Simple as that. If a parent chooses to mask their child, that's their decision. Another thing that we have asked, please allow us to walk on our children's campuses and be involved with their teachers, their staff, and school. Another simple thing, there are many schools in this county and in this state that are running normal, but yet you here, but yet we are here being deprived of that. Doesn't this place deserve to be a warm inviting experience for our kids? Not where they want to go and dread it? You are a public school board, not a parole board. We've come here month after month pleading for our parental rights for our minor children. But instead you are treating them as if they are on trial and as if we are trying to earn acceptance into allowing them to breathe free at school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa King.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Melissa and I'm here tonight. I have prepared remarks, but there have been so many valid statements that I appreciate very much. I've been watching the school board meetings because I've been unable to attend personally and I just felt it was important to come tonight as a citizen of this county, as a teacher, a former teacher in this county in charter schools, and just share my voice and just to tell you how heartbreaking it is to think that the school board can listen to these children month after month and parents month after month and not have the heart to apply critical thinking skills to do the right thing. And as a citizen, it's very upsetting, it is extremely angering as someone who values freedom that you people could just sit here and disregard, ignore. As educators, we have an opportunity to educate people. This information that's just come forward has been around for people who would look for it. This isn't new information. For a very long time, for people who were seeking health rather than living by fear, there's plenty of education that you could have provided to teachers and families, ways to keep their children healthy. Beyond that, as a former kindergarten teacher, I just can't even imagine- Beyond that, as a former kindergarten teacher, I just can't even imagine teaching children to read with a mask. I'm very grateful that I didn't have that challenge because I'm not in the public school system. But let me see, I just I'm not sure how Mr. Greco can say for the betterment of all because I don't understand how individual choice isn't for the betterment of all. Why isn't that? It's okay if I want to take care of my body and be healthy and stay safe. And the next person chooses to live an unhealthy life or lives in a situation where they get exposed. But that's our choices that we make. This is America. We have freedom of choice here. And I appreciate that he said the information that he had, but it did make me wonder. Where were you doing any research? Because the information has been available. There are resources in the community. There are doctors in the community that have been treating people that have alternative methods of getting people well. It's been known since the very beginning that the size of the virus can pass through any mask, all these masks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Bucci.
Welcome.
Hi again. My name is Susan Bucci. I'm from Tarpon Springs. I think this is my fourth time here. I have been listening to those, these frustrated parents, grandparents, including medical professionals and other experts. Almost every single person has presented a strong, clear, and reasonable argument for removing the mask requirement. You have been offered countless studies backing their arguments, and I truly wonder if you have reviewed anything you were given. It is my understanding that your main role as school board members is to support the school community in such a way as to provide a thriving learning environment for each and every student, whatever they may look like, for that student and every student can wear a mask. I recently had a conversation with a cashier at Earth Origins. I asked her if she was happy she no longer had to wear a mask. She said she absolutely was because after her first three days of wearing one at work, she wound up in the emergency room because of her asthma. And that just makes me think about, you know, what is it doing to these children that are wearing the mask all day long? Our bodies were made in the image and likeness of God. If you begin to interfere with them, you cannot be guaranteed a favorable outcome. Why are those who are wanting to trust in God being asked to go against what God has intended for us? It just doesn't make sense to me. If people who want to go against, all that is natural, that is their right, but they do not have a right to ask those who trust in God to do the same. I talked about pharmaceutical companies before. Just to refresh your recollection, they fund the studies being taught to medical students. They own the content of the shows who air their commercials, the content of the print media in which they advertise. They far outspend gas and oil lobbyists. This entire pandemic has been their show. And most people bought into it. They bought into the fear playing right into their hands. They have made an absolute fortune during this time. Good for them. They are marketing geniuses. But it's time we put an end to this. They have victimized all of us, but we can no longer allow it. We have to stand up now or this will be just the beginning. So I know you're going to vote tonight about the mask, but if anything changes over the summer, I was thinking that maybe you could have a couple of nights over the summer to hear both sides of the argument. There's so many videos and interviews out there of people that are not just mainstream. So I was thinking if you listen to that video, everybody listens to it, and then you listen to the video of the other people that are just as competent. Then you can, all the people that listen to both sides can vote whether or not, if anything changes, they should wear a mask or not. Education is key. And Deborah Williams made a good point too about how to start from within and make ourselves healthy because if this keeps happening, what are we going to do? All right, I believe this course of action will show true leadership on your part and give all of you a chance to be heroes in the eyes of the parents, but more importantly, the students. The students are very confused right now. They have been getting conflicting messages this entire
Thank you.
Next is Jeremy Kench.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Returning once again. Sticking with the topic tonight, making the agenda, obviously, speaking again later. But I don't even know where to start or what to begin. I mean, I want to thank everybody else that's came, continued to come and tried to do the right thing for all these kids because we've been here every meeting. Nothing gets heard, nothing gets done. You guys have your agenda like everybody says. I mean, to get given a trophy for doing such a great job this year with all of these kids, yet you neglect the welfare of children and allow them to be attacked by your police boards and everything. Over the mask mandate, still on topic. Let's not try to cut my mic again. You didn't deserve that prize. I mean, it's my opinion you won that like Biden won his vote. Joke, sir, joke. It won't be forgotten. None of this will. It doesn't matter what you say. Obviously, none of us trust you. Doesn't matter what you say at this point because we're still going to have this fear all summer long. But our kids will be free. And I'll tell you what, change it next year. We all do vote. You've opened up a lion. You've awakened us all. The seats aren't guaranteed. And damn it, my children will come out of school next year. You won't have them.
Please be careful.
You will not have them next year. And I'm sure many more are going to jump on board with this. We pay the taxes. We pay your payroll. We pay your bills and your debts and your everything. We elected you. And what are you doing for all of us? It's not the same people coming here all the time. I know I am. But there's many people here, new faces, first time, second time, first time. Still have the same amount of people. You've got my old lady court order protection. Now she has to sit across the street. She's not tried to come in here and talk to you people. She's followed this, but the day you attacked her and my daughter and son for trying to speak on these masks back in October. They tried to do the right thing, be patient. I've come in here and speak on their behalf. And what gets done? We still got a court case waiting. We're not taking a guilty plea. I can't wait. This isn't over for most of you because some of these are going to be called in and things are going to happen. Things will change because civil rights were taken. Keep violating everybody's civil rights because then somebody, I mean, you've come so damn close to unleashing a beast here, but I'm not going to allow you. God have mercy on me and giving me the strength I need to keep trying to do the right thing, come in here and talk to you people. To get no responses like everybody else, no answers, no nothing. That was your child. Man. You all would not still be sitting there and just looking at me if this was your daughter. What would we have done? You wouldn't want your job still. You would not be sitting on this seat with the rest of this board and this panel agreeing to the way my children neglected, thrown to the street and told, there's no address here. We don't work here by your police department. Tossed to the ground, a 13-year-old girl. Innocent young mother, attacked and assaulted. Videos and audio many times said. I just don't understand where these people are being trained and taught.
Thank you.
Cynthia Hool. I believe she left. Is that correct? Next is Julie Roust.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Julie Roust and I'm a fifth grader. First of all, you've heard everything and you still abuse these children. There is almost nothing that you haven't heard, but I come here because it's wrong. You all do. Let's get this straight. You keep on coming and coming until you end this mask mandate in Pinellas County schools. And if you don't, you will take your seats away. You force children to wear masks above their nose. Now, do you spit out of your nose or mouth? Kids have 99.9999. I can go forever and send handsome dying from COVID. You already know this. We all waste our time to come here and you act like you don't care. The parent raised the child, not you, and this means that you should not decide if a child wears a cloth on their face. Children have begged for you to end this and you still comply. In school, don't you want to make everything fair and give children the best for their academics? Like I said in my last speech, how could a kid pay attention in class with masks on? Why do we all have to repeat ourselves? I'm going to teach you a little history. Don't you remember the Declaration of Independence? The Declaration of Independence was made so people have the right for freedom. Now it's forcing little children to wear cloths on their face above their nose against parents' authority. Freedom? I know you're not supposed to answer in any speeches, but I want to know why you do this to children. Another question for you is why do you change the camera every time someone takes off their mask while speaking? These masks do nothing. It's not just COVID that's actually giving symptoms. Actually, masks also give symptoms. Scientists have found fungi and bacteria in children's masks. Imagine you're a kid during the COVID-19 pandemic and you sat down at the cafeteria taking off your mask to eat food. You then notice bacterial substances in your mask and while yes, you can get a new one, but would you want to play with other kids knowing there could be bacteria and fungi on them without them even knowing? I spent hours on a three-minute speech raising and rewriting and you act like you have no respect for children. You're creating a scared generation of kids and this needs to end. How many times will we need to come up here and basically tell you that you aren't doing your job correctly? You don't get it at all. You are impacting the development of a child's brain. You need to go back to school and while you're at it, unmask the children.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jo Tillman.
Hello, my name is Jo Tillman. At this point, you've heard it all. There's no science or data that backs up the effectiveness of masks to slow COVID spread, but you haven't listened. Masks are developmentally inappropriate for children, but you haven't listened. You've heard stats and studies that back this up, but you haven't listened. You've heard this from medical doctors, outraged parents, and so many others, but still, you haven't listened. I've been here before, like so many of us. I poured my heart out and shared my belief that masking children is child abuse. Today, you will vote on whether to keep the mask mandates, but like so many other decisions you've made this past year, you have shown your agenda is not in alignment with the best interests of our children's well-being. And so regardless of the outcome of your vote today, I and the rest of us here know there's no assurance you won't try to bring these back again next flu season or worse with a vaccine mandate. And so tonight, I'm not really here to speak to all of you. Tonight, I'm here to speak to all the parents at home who are listening. Parents out there that are tired of the masking of their children in schools, of concerns over CRT and comprehensive sex education poisoning young minds. I am here to tell you, there's another way and you have options. Quick about me, I'm a single mom of three elementary-age school children. I work a full-time corporate job and I am also a small business owner. But the most rewarding role I've taken on this past year is homeschool mom. Prompted first by my disgust with the thought of my little children being masked all day at school, I started with my PCS online. But your relentless holding on to the mask mandates led me down a path to find a better way to educate my children. Out of necessity, I felt forced into homeschooling, but now that I'm here, I am so grateful for this path. The resources, online programs, homeschool support groups have all been both eye-opening and wonderful. This year, I learned my fifth grader had never had a history class before. We happily resolved this by introducing American history, engineering, and other elective courses. There are many fantastic self-directed programs online if you, like me, can't make the time commitment to teach them purely by yourself. You can find meetups nearly every day for both kids' socialization and collaboration with like-minded parents. And in my classroom, God has his rightful place at the forefront. Parents, if you are disgusted as I am with these masks and social distancing rules for little children and the red flags of everything else they could be exposed to in public schools, I'm here to assure you, there is another way. I have found my tribe and we welcome you to join us. Unmask our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Amen.
Good evening.
We'll see about that. That is the sound, Counselor Kupersky, of your mask mandate being optional. Because I have some video I sent to Dr. Grego and the board members of their pot washer not wearing a mask. I never got a reply from you last month. I sent it again tonight, so I'm going to take the pot washer option.
Mr. Amen, can you please put a face covering over your
No, I can't because unless you're going to get the pot washer, put on hers.
Okay, no, there is a requirement right now.
No, there's not a requirement. This is optional. Go ahead and trespass me, arrest me, whatever you want to do, cut my mic. It's over.
Madam Chair, I'm going to give Mr. Amen one more warning. Mr. Amen, I'm giving you a warning if you do not put it on your, okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Caputo.
Is Mr. Caputo?
Jeffrey Caputo. Kristen Strecker.
Good evening.
Hello. So here we are again. We made it to the end of the year, the longest school year ever. It feels a bit crazy that our children can freely breathe and literally go everywhere without a mask except for school. Every different group of the government agencies, you know, major medical facilities, they've all altered their COVID restrictions based on learning more about COVID through the year we've been through, except the school board. Hillsborough and Pasco County have both publicly stated that masks will be made optional in the fall. They both even allowed their graduates to actually smile in their once-in-a-lifetime photos, except Pinellas. Apparently, when there's a Department of Education event, masks are optional, but not for the children sitting in school all day, every day. If you put your political bias aside, look at the bigger picture, take all of the new information that we now know, children being masked makes zero sense. We're asking for masks to be optional in the fall with no strings attached. Children are essentially not carriers of this virus. Teachers have had ample opportunity to get vaccinated if they want. And we've all seen the photos of Dr. Grego at a podium mask-free and then seeing children at that same podium on the same day wearing masks. That was the biggest slap in the face to all of the parents and all of the children who've been struggling to abide by this mandate for the whole year. And it was just really, it sort of showed that he knows he won't ever be held accountable for his actions. So that was really disappointing. I just hope you guys take all this into consideration for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joanne Marshall. Andrea Tipton.
Hello.
Good evening.
So tonight, you'll notice that a lot less people showed up. And if you ask anybody why, it's because they think you're fully removing the mask mandate. We know the truth, those of us that showed up. We know there's going to be strings attached. We know that you're going to look at it again in August because I spoke to my principal just this week and she said, you guys will be looking at it in August to see what you're going to really do. And we know how long it takes to get these things removed, so we're going to keep showing up. It's very annoying for us too to be here. The other thing is, I know you guys said you saw the Fauci emails. We all saw them. It's pretty embarrassing that a year has gone by masking our precious children, knowing asymptomatic people per his email do not spread it like they thought it did. But yet, our kids are still masked. I'm looking at graduation photos of my friend's kids tonight in San Diego, California. None of them are wearing masks. My son is in fifth grade. His step-up was canceled. They're doing nothing for him. He didn't even get a Zoom. So it's goodbye, good luck in middle school this year. Not every kid got even a Zoom. And I can see you're annoyed. That's great. Fauci has come out just recently and said, everybody needs to get vaccinated because there's another variant of this. My kid is not getting vaccinated. The other thing is, I've already had COVID. I'm not getting vaccinated. Now they're finding out that we probably have, we don't need them. Are you going to make me get vaccinated to go on my son's field trip next year? Because I'm not getting vaccinated. My son missed his Enterprise Village field trip, which I think is one of the most important field trips for little kids. And they totally canceled it this year. And next year, I want to go to that. And I want to go to it vaccine-free. I'm not wearing, I'm not getting the vaccine. I'm not wearing, I'm not getting the vaccine. I don't understand why that is such a hard thing for you guys to understand, that 50% of the people are not getting it now, they're not going to get it when the school starts. The other thing that I really want to talk about is what happened to Alicia, and nothing got done because the kids had a mask, but yet another child was just bullied at that same exact school. Those are going viral. Pinellas County is on the map. That county, this county, that school, is all over the internet with multiple bullying videos, and nothing was done for Alicia. I don't even know that little girl. Her video was sent to me by somebody in California, and that's how I found out about it. And then I met these people here who came out to support her. Something has to be done, because that testimony this morning was, or this afternoon, was heartbreaking to hear her mother. I can't even imagine what she's going through. I hope that all of you go home and cry about that tonight, because that was very hard to listen to, hear her say that the world would be better off without her. What kind of child has to feel like that? She has to go to school next year and think that her life should be over because of bullying, but then another girl gets bullied at that same exact school and they kick the kid out that bullied her, but nothing was done for Alicia? You guys got to really do something about that county.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm back. I got three main points tonight. The first thing is a speech from Dr. Timothy Leary back in the early '70s, I believe. Think for yourself, question authority. Think for yourself, question authority. Throughout human history, our species has faced the frightening, terrorizing fact that we do not know who we are or where we're going in this ocean of chaos. It has been the authorities, the political, the religious, the educational authorities who've attempted to comfort us by giving us order, rules, regulations, informing and forming in our minds their views of reality. To think for yourself, you must question authority and learn how to put yourself in a state of vulnerable, open-mindedness, chaotic, confused vulnerability to inform yourself. Think for yourself, question authority. That's not for you guys. That's for everyone else that's listening, everyone else that's had to show up here. My second point, Dunedin native, Dunedin resident, Dunedin business owner. Our business provides fitness activities to children primarily ages three to seven, 17, sorry. Quick story, one of our students has been breaking out, having multiple headaches, and has been very short of breath. This is just one of them. She is deathly afraid of removing her mask and being in trouble, even though our environment is a mask optional, whatever the family and the child is comfortable with. She is still afraid in our environment. We finally got her to go ahead, take it off, take a breather, go get some water. She's breaking out all around her mask. It's filthy. She takes it off like any child, where they don't take great care of things, and they drop it on the ground. After class, she ends up picking it, putting it right back on, on her face. They do this in the bathroom, they do this all over, they do this in cafeterias at schools. I've asked this of multiple children. Again, I try not to assume, because I'm not a child, I'm not in the school, so we have to ask them, "Please, just tell me how your day is, what goes on?" And they all admit they all do the same thing. My third point is, if you go to PCPAO.org, Pinellas County Property Appraisers Office.org, and you start looking up any school, including this building, in Pinellas County, it is listed as property use, "County Public School." And what is the exemption? Government. Yes. It's not homestead, it's not institutional, it's nothing else. It's listed as a government building. This is true for all other schools that I have researched in Pinellas County, just coming from someone that's used to do property appraisal. My final point is freedom over Fauci-ism. Unmask our children.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audra Christian.
Good evening.
Good evening. I see our tribe showed up. This is awesome. Yeah, so do you guys remember a year ago when I told you that you were eroding your own authority by doing what you guys were doing and not listening to people and all of that? You really are single-handedly, like, creating your own demise. And you know you lost the argument with, when Mark Mc-whatever his name is, is your only ally. Like, that's the only ally. And he goes from school board to school board. That's pretty bad. So 2020 taught us a couple things as parents, right? That you guys don't think for yourselves, like at all. Okay, you're supposed to... I want to make sure. There we go. Okay. And that you are totally okay with hurting children for the greater good, because we all know this is awful. This is bad, right? Actually, Caprice Edmond said her little daughter's used to it. I'm like, eh, you could get used to Uncle Freddie molesting you too. It doesn't make it okay. You get used to abuse, you do. And that we learned that you guys will blindly goose-step in stride with the teachers' union, but not the taxpayers. Right? That's the truth. So I think you guys owe the children an apology, a really big apology, for saying, "I think you need to tell the kids, hey, guys, we're sorry for being complicit in abusing you on a daily level." Daily. They were abused for hours, right? All because Dr. Fossey was like, yeah. You know, I mean, you had parents giving you medical stuff that told you this wasn't okay, and you guys still did it. So I also wanted to say, and I don't even know if this is appropriate, but you know me, I'm going to say it anyway. Sarah O'Toole works for you guys. With all the sunshine requests that we keep getting, her name keeps coming up over and over and over again. And you know what we heard about that one? She's supposed to be a Christian. So Sarah O'Toole, this is to you. You need to do what's right. You need to do what's right, Sarah. Because you're complicit in the masks, abusing children, you are complicit in the CRT, and you are also complicit in the new sexual education that's coming out. So there's a hinge right there. Do you get what I'm talking about? There's this one name over and over and over again. Do what's right, Sarah O'Toole. Okay, we're done. Have a great day, guys.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natasha Kido.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. This is my daughter here with me. She goes to a public school here in Pinellas County. But I'm here to talk about the mask policy, and like the others, I have trust issues. For instance, at the last meeting, we were given explanations from school board attorney David Kapersky about what his opinion was in regards to Governor DeSantis' executive orders were. These so-called opinions seem to have more of a direct influence to your decisions, or should I say, a lack of decisions, than the hundreds of parents, children, and general public who are actually caring about the suffering of the children from wearing masks for seven-plus hours a day. This is what I consider to be unethical. From here on out, do we need to start filing complaints to the Florida bar to report that a school board attorney is directly influencing Pinellas County school boards to enforce something that is unethical and unreasonable? What reasonable person could listen to hours and hours of testimonies of how these masks have caused harm to our children and not step up and do something about it? What right does that give you to tell us what medical decisions we as parents can or cannot make about our children just to get an education? Why should we support or entrust our school, or any school, with our children who mandates child abuse, coercion, shame, guilt, manipulation, and harm to children by wearing a mask? Irony, on your school board regarding face coverings, sorry, school board rules regarding face coverings, you've listed Florida Statute 1001.41, which is General Powers of District School Board, Section 1, states that you are to determine policies and procedures consistent with state law. Last time I checked, the CDC is not a lawmaker. Also, there's nothing in the Florida statutes, the Florida Constitution, or the U.S. Constitution that supports child abuse or child neglect. That's what masking children is. This is, however, not consistent with state law, but you have still chosen to do so. You still have chosen to do so, even though you represent us, not the other way around. The mask policies have caused teachers to be silenced, quit their jobs, and brought out the worst in what school teachers we have left. This is evident in the blaming and blame-shifting that is going on today with the schools. Your actions from the last meeting was a perfect example of this, with the way you treated that young boy when he was struggling to read his speech, and how you refuse to show compassion, something so simple. No more abusing our children from here on out, and give the choice back to the parents where it belongs, and remove the mask policies from our kids from now on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Luna. Erin Olzuski.
Hi there. How are you? I'm back again. I was actually here the very first meeting that you had. My name is Erin Olzuski. I'm a registered nurse. I'm also an Army combat veteran. And I don't even know what to say to you guys anymore. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I saw all these parents here today, and as a nurse, you know, I listen to my patients, right? As a nurse, I'm an advocate for my patients. They know their bodies better than anybody else. And I listen to them. And what you guys are in a position to do is also listen to the children. They know their bodies better than anyone else, so do their parents. And I feel like you guys have really taken it upon yourselves to ignore all of these parents and all of these children telling you how they feel. And this goes against the actual science. The actual science, not the science that follows the agenda. As a nurse, I know for a fact that these masks don't work. They're not professionally worn, they're not professionally fitted. You know, you guys know this, but you continue pushing this, knowing that this is causing a lot of problems in these children. How can you continue to ignore the actual science and claim that you're following the science? Please pay attention to me, Eileen, Greggo, like, all of you guys, you know, this is what you're doing. You're in a position paid by the tax dollars. We pay for you to sit there. And for you to sit there and ignore everybody is really a slap in the face to all these parents. So I'm going to take it upon myself to let you know that your seats are going to be taken. We are organizing. We have all of your background checks, especially your husband, Caprice. We have his background checked. We have a lot of photos of him, too. It's pretty disgusting. So for you to sit here and put our children in masks up to eight, 12 hours a day, sitting with no liability, the liability will come, and it's going to come in the form of your seats being taken. And we, the people, and all these parents, are going to be taking that. So it's up to you if you want to stand on the right side of history, or you want to stand on the wrong side of history. It's disgusting, I'm appalled, but at the same time, I'm glad that you have all been exposed. And this is just the beginning, and you guys can go home all summer and enjoy it, but you know what? You abused our children this entire school year. And I hope every one of you can go to bed at night and be able to sleep, because our children haven't been able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Canant.
Good evening.
Hello. Grego, just to be clear, one correction, appreciate everything you said earlier, but you didn't keep schools open, the school board didn't keep them open, the teacher sure as hell didn't keep them open, DeSantis kept them open. So just to make that very clear. Data-wise, decision-wise, it's okay. Everyone's accepting defeat at this point, right? Fauci, CDC, everybody. It's okay. But at some point, you all need to as well. Okay? I know there's not going to be a public apology, but myself, for a year, I've known the same things coming out that have come out now about masks, about this whole thing. These people, most of them, not that guy. Everybody has known this data. What's embarrassing is it took you guys, feeling all this pressure from everybody around to make a decision. You are the last ones. Like, that's how sad this is. You're the last ones to use this data you claim you're using. You're the last ones to accept even federal guidelines on these things, and that's sad. The unstable gentleman who come up here and said flus are down and blah, 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 yeah, we get that. You know, human interaction stops virus transmissions. That's, I mean, that's evident, but that's not the world we live in unless you guys all have homesteads and acreage where you don't interact with the human race. Kids don't social distance. Anywhere near schools, if you think they do, they don't. I can point to countless situations with the kids. Nobody's social distancing on the buses. They're still whispering to each other, they're talking, they're touching each other. I mean, again, this is all just a game. You guys didn't have your masks on before you came up here. Nobody in any of our rooms has our masks on, except for the cameras, right? Nobody is doing any of these guidelines anymore. Everyone can get vaxxed if they want. Everyone can stay home if they want. You need to be honest to your teachers that are still fearful. You did that. You drove this fear. Deborah was right. You haven't updated the health policy. Back in October, I said you need to get your teachers right. They have fear for no reason. The school board wanted to keep that fear up, that's fine. It was on you to calm that fear and not have the situations happen that happened with your teachers. Everybody has tools to protect themselves. It's time to give that choice back. The bullying that I've heard because of non-mask wearing, you don't hear the opposite, right? And if this was a gender or race issue, you guys would all be forced to resign. The bullying situation that happened is embarrassing. Spring of Kids of Lysol, all this other thing that went down in our county is a disgrace. You guys took this, you knew it was virtue signaling for the longest time, you ignored the science you claimed to follow, and either way, it's just time to admit it. Just move on. We know we won't get an apology again, right? And for people who sit there and talk about, if everyone's not vaccinated, you need to educate the public, okay? 10% of your student base is vaccinated. Vaccinations are not mandatory in Florida. There's religious exemptions. And you're around non-vaccinated people all the time. Adults aren't vaccinated, we are not up to date, you don't get boosters for the shots that you should. Nobody up here, I bet, does. You got your COVID vax, you got your flu vax, that's fine. You're not getting all your other vaxes on time. Either way, you chose to come for our children. At the end of the day, we're coming for your seats for the bad decisions that you made.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Agnezika Canant.
I go to an unmasked school. When I tell my friends about how I don't have to wear masks, they're amazed. Why? You made, you make them wear masks and you make them social distance. One of my friends, when somebody accidentally took a drink out of his cup, he broke down crying because you taught him the wrong thing. I wish that masks could be eliminated. The only people who should wear masks are surgeons and doctors when they're doing operations. That's it. Nobody else. Face masks pose serious risks to the healthy. Every single student in that school wishes that masks could be removed. They get sweaty at recess, kids run around in them, they can't change their masks, they can barely get a drink of water, and then they have to go home and wear them.
Thank you.
Our final speaker for the public hearing this evening is Wendy Woolley.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? So I guess you save the best for last. I've heard dozens of people come up here this evening and talk about how it's all been said, but it hasn't all been said. A lot of things have been missed, like thank you, really thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you for keeping my kids safe, thank you for keeping my neighbors who are teachers safe, thank you for erring on the side of caution. Tonight, I've heard about canceled parties and a lack of parent involvement at school and sweating at recess, and, I mean, we live in Florida. in Florida, and you sweat at recess. But so far, no one has mentioned that my son's favorite teacher caught COVID in March and is still on an oxygen tank. And no one has mentioned how I don't live in fear. I actually live in trust that my son's school is doing everything they can to keep him safe, but not just him and not just the people who complain. This is my oldest son, and he wanted me to read something on his behalf. He goes to middle school in Dunedin. He says, "I attend one of the many schools managed by the board, and I acknowledge that it is incredibly annoying to wear a mask, but not a single person I know is radically opposed to it. It does not prohibit their breathing. It is a requirement, and they understand that." Many of the people here state repetitively that they have a few students who, that very few students have been infected recently, and they use that as a reason to repeal the mask requirement. But can they not see that students are getting sick, or, excuse me, students are not getting sick because of the mask requirement and proper COVID protocols? Parents have come up to say that they know the audacities that the students experience, but then they admit they haven't been in schools recently. How can they know of that And finally, we both admit that there is a huge chance that statistics regarding the virus may have been inflated. But at the time, the information that you cited is informal... I'm sorry. I gotta breathe. But at the time, the information you cited is the best that we had, and other information may have been informal, unreliable, or biased. He would like to say thank you for keeping me safe. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Is that it? All right. And that will end this portion of the public input. And so, board members, are there any comments? Ms. Edmonds?
I have a few questions. I know we've had a hearing before, and some of the questions that I'm gonna ask are repetitive, just because I think it's important to be crystal clear. We have heard from some people talk about whether or not we can implement a mask mandate in the future. I think it's important to get some guidance on that, that if there is an increase in cases or anything like that where we need to reassess if we will be able to do that as a board.
Who are you asking?
I guess it's a legal question for Mr. Kupersky.
Yes. As I mentioned when I introduced this item, the board in October adopted an emergency rule, Chapter 120.54, which governs your rulemaking ability, that every policy you adopt, you've gotta follow those procedures in that statute. And that is exactly what you did in August. I'm sorry if I misspoke. Not October, in August, you adopted an emergency rule. The statute requires that you find that there's an immediate danger to the public health, safety, or welfare, and then you have to cite to that. And then, of course, you have to have public input at the board meeting and then adopt that. So you could certainly do that again, whether it's COVID, some other immediate danger to health, safety, or welfare, but you're gonna have to have a discussion as to what grounds led you to that conclusion.
All right. Ms. Edmonds, go ahead.
And I know, Dr. Greg, when this was introduced, you shared some of the plans. But can you go into further detail about what we're gonna be doing over the summer to ensure the safety or following the COVID protocols that have been made with our COVID-19 team?
Well, as I mentioned, Ms. Edmonds, is that we're gonna continue to keep our buildings clean, and we're gonna have about 10,000, I think, elementary school students. So the good news is that is very, a lot less students than we normally see in a day, but we're gonna have a great summer bridge program. We're gonna be running buses. We're gonna be serving food, and I look forward to it. I mean, I think we've learned a lot, but we also have learned that, as the speakers have said, that we're good. And I never thought off-ramping this virus would be as more difficult than on-ramping, but certainly look forward to the board's vote and moving back to some sense of normalcy.
Anything else? All righty. Mrs. Kane?
I had a follow-up question to Ms. Edmonds' question to Mr. Kupersky. When we put, when the emergency order was put forth in the summer and we had to create a safety plan to reopen schools, masking was part of the CDC recommendation at the time. And from what I recall, Governor DeSantis and Mr. Corcoran had put forth in the emergency order that we needed to work with the CDC to create a safety plan in order to open brick-and-mortar schools for the school year in September and late August, depending on when we chose to open schools. And by doing so, we had to have a safety plan that was recommended by them and that was put forth with cleaning procedures and COVID safety procedures due to increased numbers in Florida at the time. If I'm correct, yes.
And that made, I believe, the board's decision of finding an immediate danger to the health, safety, and welfare under the statute easier than it would be, I think, in the future if those conditions do not exist.
And it was also true that due to that emergency order, if we were to not create a safety plan and we were to not open brick-and-mortar schools, we would have had to lay off thousands of teachers in Pinellas County and lose an abundance of jobs, and schools would need to close if we were to make that decision at the time.
That is correct. That emergency order required that the parents be given the option of in-person education. Otherwise, anybody who learned virtually would only receive, and I'm looking at Mr. Smith, approximately two-thirds of our normal revenue, which would yield, as you noted, significant layoffs and budget cuts that no district in the state of Florida, that I understand, absorbed or decided to test. So that is correct.
And unlike many districts, we were able to continue to offer choice to parents as best that we could at the time in order to offer them virtual instruction as well as brick-and-mortar instruction and hybrid classrooms, as well as offering many extracurricular classes that in other districts were not offered, including music programs, film programs, engineering programs, medical programs, veterinarian programs, and several other extracurricular magnet and additional programs that many districts forewent offering due to COVID by only offering core curriculum during this school year. So I do think that as we came up with our safety plan, we did our very best in Pinellas County to offer choice to parents, not just in the way their child was instructed, but also choice in curriculum throughout the year, where other districts had to scale it down. And we tried to continue to keep offering it the best that we could in many, many different ways. And I just wanted to point that out, that that was part of the decision-making process in July and August leading up to the original emergency order that was put into place.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? All right. Well, there is no other. So we have a motion that was made by Mr. Dudley, a second by Mrs. Long, to repeal the board rule regarding face coverings effective 5:00 on June, 5:00 PM on June 9, 2021. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. It passes 6-0 unanimously. All right. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Long and a second by Mr. Dudley. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. And it passes unanimously as well, 6-0. We will now move to items introduced by the superintendent.
Yes, ma'am, Chair and the board, thank you so much for your patience and understanding and certainly your comments this evening. I want to thank the public also for coming out and being involved with this conversation as it's happening throughout the state. And I think we've all hopefully learned something from it. But I also want to not look past the many celebrations and many things I've certainly witnessed as our end-of-school year is happening and some of the great stories that you've seen. And certainly, you want to thank the board for your attendance at each and every one of our graduations today. So I just, a huge thank you to our teachers, our staff, our students, our parents, and everyone involved with making this a successful year. I too want to say thank you to our staff for putting on the raise in Tropicana Field, for allowing us to infiltrate and to occupy Tropicana Field and to help us along the way. Also, Bay Care Park, Ballpark, which graduated the other evening, Friday evening, Clearwater High School. So, and many of our other graduations that took place at our high schools, for some of our smaller centers, special centers and so forth. Again, we occupied them and we also represented them all. I was very proud to hear the speeches of our students. I shared with each and every faculty member the grateful feeling that they have. And in their speeches, I was astonished of the, but also not surprised of the gratefulness that they felt to the teachers and the amount of time they felt to even thanking crossing guards, food lunchroom service workers, plant operators, teachers, administrators, for really getting through this school year and making this school year a productive one for them. So if you haven't seen that little video that the communications department, they just captured, they captured bits and pieces of the student's speeches. And this is from their heart. So this is a lot of what they've felt. So thank you so much. We were notified just the other day, yesterday or the day before, that Two Tran, a classroom support employee at Rollins Elementary School, has been named as one of the top five finalists in all of Florida as a school-related employee of the year. Tran has worked for six years as a bilingual associate. He's offered support to students during his lunch break and after school. He also runs the Principal's Multicultural Advisory Committee. We know it as PMAC. With PMAC, he creates activities that staff members and students can incorporate within their classroom. He also leads and facilitates an after-school math club. He does it all there. He volunteers with FACEIT and helps teens throughout our district between the ages of 12 and 18 years of old learn about the consequences and effects of possession of alcohol, tobacco, and other things. You know, since 2013, I had to add it up, but we have had, as a district, had six top-five finalists and two overall state winners in the support employees, which is unprecedented. It's been great. Also, just a reminder, Sarah Painter, our Teacher of the Year, is also a top-five finalist, has been in Tallahassee since Sunday. She should be coming home tomorrow, interviewing and working with the Commissioner and the leadership team in Tallahassee as she goes up against four other finalists throughout the state of Florida. And certainly say kudos to her and thank you for representing Pinellas so well. We have Clearwater High School seniors that won the Junior ROTC scholarships. We have three Clearwater High School Marine Corps, two of whom will be going to getting college, full college scholarships of $180,000 to $220,000 each. One going to the University of South Florida in the fall to pursue a degree in civil engineering, and the other two going to Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University. Both will be receiving over, just under a quarter of a million dollars to attend that university. We also had senior winner, a senior winner and also a principal of Pinellas Park, Jacqueline Shermer, Pinellas Park High School senior, received a full scholarship for two years as a Florida prepaid scholarship from the Florida Tax Watch. And she's 16 years of age. She's an early college admissions student. And she's also, has overcome a tremendous amount. She's legally blind, and she'll be attending the University of Florida. And she's done such a tremendous job. So this scholarship will certainly become extremely handy. The Florida Tax Watch also selected Principal Patterson. They received the Florida, one of few principal leadership awards for raising the academic excellence of Pinellas Park High School. So we congratulate both the student and the principal that received their awards just this past week. Really interesting, I know this is the last time I can brag on some of these students, and we don't have time to do all of them, but some of them just are so different. And that's the finalist for the NPR's national competition, Allegra Durst, Clearwater Fundamental Middle School eighth grader, was named as a finalist of the National Public Radio NPR 2021 Student Podcast Challenge. There were more than 2,600 podcasts submitted from 47 states, including the District of Columbia. And of that number, 12 middle school finalists were named, and Allegra was one of those. Her podcast was named Stardew Valley, which is loosely based on the video game Stardew Valley, where players inherit their grandfather's old farm plot in Stardew Valley. So interesting stuff. Our students are competing throughout the United States. Just as a reminder, our summer bridge is not only gonna kick off, but it's going very well. We have over 17,000 students enrolled. The one new program that I mentioned to the board was the Rising Kindergarten Students. We have over 1,100 students, and that number continues to grow. Rising Kindergartens are registered for the kickoff into kindergarten. And we have over 60%, just around 60% of our targeted population registered for summer, summer, summer bridge. Over 17,000 total right now that have enrolled. So we're gonna continue that push. We're happy that the parents are engaged with us and that it's going to be one of the more robust summer programs ever. As I mentioned before, we are providing transportation to probably around 4,500, 4,600 students and parents who've requested that. So we're pleased to be able to provide that service this year and hope to continue it, too. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Okay. Items introduced by the school board attorney.
I have no items. Thank you, ma'am.
Good. Thank you. Items introduced by school board members. Mr. Dudley?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. I wanted to, first of all, congratulate all of the seniors graduating. And, you know, we, it's been a tough, tough couple of years, but they certainly have memories to share that are a little different than most everybody else. But I did want to single out, I had the honor and the privilege of attending the Laumann Innovation Academy graduations. And I gotta tell you, it was really something nice. This is the first class that started as fifth graders and went all the way through and graduated. And there was, I'm not sure, it was right on 100, 103 or 104, whatever it was. But I'll tell you what, it was a great ceremony. Kids really were so ecstatic, you know, going up, getting their diplomas, the fellowship amongst all of them, because most of them have been together since fifth grade. And it was, it was really a wonderful experience. And my hats off to Principal Garcia. She really did a, the kids were, everybody was very, very respectful. It was really a very, very nice ceremony. And I think that when it was all done, they, after they all walked, they gave each one of the graduates a carnation. And when they did the moving the tassel, they all took their flowers and threw them in the air. And then they went back later and retrieved them. So they all have one. But then they went out and had a little get-together out in the courtyard there. And I was very impressed, and it was very, it wasn't what I expected. I don't know what I was expecting, but I, just, it was, it was just different. And it was, reminded me of an old-fashioned graduation. It was held inside. They have a gym slash auditorium, put the chairs out. They were all separated. The kids all wore their masks. A couple of students spoke. And it was really, really a great, great ceremony. And again, my hats off to Ms. Garcia and the rest of their staff. And they did wonderful. And you could tell the kids really very sincere when they went up, walked across the stage. A lot of hugs and stuff, because they know each other, you know? I mean, they've been there, you know, since fifth grade. So anyway, that's what I wanted to add to say. I think that the, now with the graduations all behind us now, and it's, let's hope that... from here on out, we can get some semblance of normalcy. And I think we all have to kind of just look at what's happened in the past. It's done. Let's move forward and power positive thinking. Don't, you know, just go there with a great attitude next year and let's get it done. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. All right. Ms. Kane?
Your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
No, they turned it on for you.
Oh. Sorry, I'm not doing it again.
There you go.
We're all on it. Thank you so much. I want to say, as we conclude this school year, this has been one long school year for everybody involved. And I just want to say an absolute thank you and heartfelt gratitude to all the teachers and staff of Pinellas County, from our lunchroom staff, to our custodian staff, to our bus drivers, to our teachers. We've all, they have all pivoted in so many ways this year, been incredibly innovative and supportive members of this community to our children. We've been told many times tonight that we're uncaring or that we're unfeeling. All of us here have families. All of us here have children. I have four children in schools. And I can't thank the teachers enough for doing their absolute best in a world of unknowns this year. We've all struggled as a community, and I think it's an important time to come together. And graduation's been a wonderful time for that. I've seen many communities supporting each other, being there for each other, regardless of whether we all have the same issues, the same problems. Everybody is struggling with something in their personal life. Everyone is struggling in different ways through this pandemic. But it's important as a community to come together, to make decisions that benefit as many people as possible in the community. And I, I do thank staff and administration, teachers, all that were involved that continued to try to do what they knew or what they felt at the time was best for students and parents and families. And thank you also to parents who pivoted and worked harder than ever this year to partner with teachers, to help teachers if they were online and they were doing hybrid. I know I did for several semesters and I felt like a teacher's assistant many times. And that was a new experience for me, even though I have done school online before for myself. It was very different as a parent to become the teacher's assistant and try to teach my children through that medium. And so, I think teachers who worked with us, parents who helped us through, who may not know how to teach certain subject areas. I've never been a kindergarten teacher and it was a learning education for me this year. And I appreciate all the help and support that I received from the school and the principal and the vice principal and all involved. It's been a difficult year for all of us, and I am happy in some ways to put it to a close, but also to take all the lessons learned forward as we move forward in education. We've learned so much from this experience about teaching through technology. I'm excited that in the future, we might find better and more useful ways to use that technology for students to benefit their education moving into the future. We have to think about what's coming next and how we can use these lessons to push our community, our children, and our families forward. And so, I thank everybody for this year, for all the innovation and for all the hard work and dedication that so many people have put forth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mrs. Long?
I'd like to also say thank you to all of these hard workers that we have in our school system. Dr. Grego for your leadership, Dr. Kupersky, or Mr. Kupersky for your guidance in this, all the administrators, the teachers, the support staff. I haven't been at the last two meetings because I had COVID and I was in the hospital. And a week ago, I lost the biggest inspiration in my life, my mother. But she taught me that you have to be kind. You have to think before you open your mouth. You know, children watch these meetings, maybe not the little ones, but the older ones. And then I hear people all the time, "How did our society get this way?" Because we're teaching our kids, when you say these terrible, mean things, and I'm sorry, but it has to be said, respect starts with us. And if we want our children to learn respect, if we want our children to grow up to be good citizens, it starts with us. And I've learned, I had a great mom who worked for child abuse. I saw child abuse. But my God, it doesn't matter our private lives. That has nothing to do with the job we do here. That has nothing to do. It's what we do here. And every single one of us made these decisions to help everyone, the parents, the children, the teachers, and the community. Many of our support staff worked at nursing homes. Those older people had a right not to get COVID. We didn't know what we were dealing with when we first started. And Mr. Kalu, thank you. I think, I watched the last meetings. I know that you've gone through some terrible things. And sometimes it does take a lot of people to get knocked down, but thank you for the support you showed tonight. This is ridiculous. This country is going down quickly and we're helping. This isn't about masks. This is about political issues. And don't try to tell me it isn't. We all need to be supportive of one another. And I'm sorry I'm going off, but at 60 years old, I finally realized what's important. It's being kind to each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Edna?
First, I would like to congratulate the class of 2021. Sorry, my [inaudible]. In August, I was a teacher. I was working at Fairmont Park Elementary School, mask on, social distancing and everything. I have four kids. They've all gone through Pinellas County Schools. And proudly, one graduated last year from St. Pete High School and one graduated from, this year, from St. Pete High School. When people come to explain or express their viewpoint regarding the decisions that have been made following the guidance of the medical team, I think that it's important not only to be respectful, as Ms. Long mentioned, but to have some type of understanding. Nobody knew what we were getting into. Here we are, the cases have declined, and we're moving forward. The best thing for us to do now is be supportive. I don't want to go on a tangent, but I also think it's important to talk about some of the things that were voted on in the consent agenda. And I am proud to support the equity position, which will be an administrative on, not special assignment. It will be a part of Dr. Grego's leadership team. When we talk about equity in education, it's equity for all students. All students. Whether you're low-income, houseless, in foster care, minority, or student with disabilities. So, I am proud to support that initiative. And I want to thank Dr. Grego again and his staff for leading through the pandemic, for being innovative when it comes to how are we going to be progressive and support cultural competence and equity for all students? I think it's our job. We all ran for election and of course, people can say what they want to say and do what they want to do. But at the end of the day, I believe that every single one of us is here because we want what's best for kids. I'd also like to highlight some of the administrative appointments, and that's one of Ally Owens for 74th Street. I had the opportunity of working with her at Woodlawn Elementary. And again, I can go on and on and on about my work experience, my volunteer experience, being a garden lightem and a parent of kids that attend Pinellas County Schools. And when I tell you, yes, we have work to do, but we have to have people that are willing to put forth the effort. And what I've seen from behind the scenes and working with staff, having one-on-one conversations, is that this district is ready to move forward. Yes, we have some area superintendent's appointments. And, you know, I really think that under Dr. Grego's leadership and some of the goals that he has, that we'll be able to move forward. I won't go on and on and on, but you really don't understand what goes on behind the scenes. There's a lot of conversation and dialogue that you may not see or hear on the dais. And I am just grateful for all of the staff and the work they do behind the scenes. It's not for a photo op. It's not to have a newspaper headline. Thank you, Kevin Hendricks. I really appreciate you. Thank you. And I will close my comments by saying, things have been politicized. And moving forward, we're going to have to remain focused. Focus on the end goal of 100% student success. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Carr?
Thank you. I'd like to just express appreciation to Dr. Vasquez for her team and Ms. Matway for the incredible job that went into all the behind-the-scenes work that was necessary to accomplish these graduations that we all had the opportunity to attend and experience. I too had a student who graduated last year and during the pandemic and have students have children. And I'm grateful that this year's class had that opportunity to experience that in a more closely gathered and well-attended event. So, thank you to the team for that work. I also would like to point out some of the items in our consent agenda that were voted on today and including some of the changes to our area superintendents. We acknowledge the retirements of some folks. And when we have this much leadership turnover, I just want to express that I appreciate them taking the risk and stepping into these new positions and that I know they will be well-supported. I'm very happy to see some of the placements of folks that still remain here and continue to mentor them and guide them through as they are stepping into these new roles as our new area superintendents. Also, with the end of this year, as I think Mrs. Kane expressed well, we didn't always know what we were getting into. I think that it's important for us to acknowledge the individuals who made tremendous commitment throughout the year, who spent large amounts of time, weekends, evenings, in addition to our teachers who spent evenings and weekends learning the new software, simultaneously teaching, walking into an environment they didn't know. But the individuals at the district, and Mr. Hendrick, you were acknowledged for your leadership in our teaching and learning. Ms. Paula Texel, who had to help support and guide so many individual human resource decisions being made. Ms. Beth Harandine, who has done a tremendous job working with the public and our communications department. Mr. Smith, who had to navigate us through so many different decisions being made around finance. Mr. Kupersky for your guidance in our legal field. And Mr. Herbig, you are amazing because not only did you have to first do all of the work involved in keeping our children safe with the new requirements of the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act, but then had to pivot that and make our schools more open and aerated while still complying with those elements, provide transportation in a whole new way, and serve food to students through closed doors. So, it's been a tremendous year. I agree, it's a time for us to come together as we make this turn and look forward into the accomplishments that we will achieve this summer, working to fill any gaps in student learning and begin next year successfully. So, I'm proud to serve on this board. I'm proud of my colleagues that I work with, and I appreciate you, your compassion, your professionalism, and your devotion to children. So, thank you for being, allowing me to serve with you on this board and as part of this team.
Thank you. There have been a lot of things that have been said. A lot of people have been thanked. But I want to just share very quickly one thing that is kind of on my heart. When I work with school boards, I often share the story about the man that was at NASA. And they, a reporter was walking around, looking around and just seeing what was going on. And he came across a man that was sweeping the floor. And he went up to the man and said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "I'm working to put a man on the moon." That's what this district has done this year, all the way across the board. Every single person that has been involved has been working to get our children the best education that they can possibly have this particular year, to do the best for our students, to keep them safe, to keep them getting a good education, and also to meet their emotional and physical needs. I'm not going to go through and again, thank every individual people. They have already been thanked. And, but the one group that hasn't been thanked is this board. I want to thank you. We have managed, there have been political issues that have come forward. We are from a variety of political parties ourselves, and not just two, but we have managed to not make things political when we have been making decisions for our students. And we have, and we've worked hard to make sure that we're concentrating on what the students need. And I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you greatly. I want to congratulate the students that have all graduated. I think it's just amazing that they were still so excited about everything that was going on at the end of the year. I want to wish all of our staff, who is not going to be working over the summer, I wish them the most relaxing and wonderful summer. And those that are doing summer bridge, thank you for doing so, and we wish you great success with that. So, thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to any items that were requested by the board.
I did not record any questions, ma'am.
Except that Mr. Herbig get in touch with Mr. Onx that was here. That would be the only thing. Okay. And alrighty. So, if there are no objections, I will adjourn this meeting. We will have our evaluation afterward, but we will now move to public, this meeting is adjourned, and we will move to public participation. Mrs. Simonetti, do we have speakers?
Board members and Dr. Grego, we have, I believe, 12 speakers under general public comments. Our first speaker is Sandy Stegmaier.
Welcome.
Good evening. First thing I'd like to tell to parasite man, President Trump is not a parasite. He's the best president we ever had. Okay. I currently have two high school students and two grandkids at Pinellas County Schools. I'm also involved with Moms for Liberty. We stand for American exceptionalism. We stand for truth versus lies. We stand for good versus evil. Moms for Liberty says no to your wokeism agenda. We say no to indoctrination of our children. We say no to critical race theory. And we say no to comprehensive sex ed. We're not going away. My friends who are teachers do not feel safe to speak out for fear of repercussions from you. I found, I find that astounding. Good news, teachers, we have your back. Governor Ron DeSantis has your back. Turning Point USA has your back. Charlie Kirk is recruiting teachers, giving you the tools and power to fight Marxism in this school. Google Turning Point Academy. God bless. And the battle has just begun.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Bryant.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Cook, Vice Chair Long. I'm so glad you're back. We were worried about you. We missed you. Glad you're here, Dr. Grego and staff. If you looked on the sheet that I turned in, what I wanted to have public comments on, it was simply, "Thank you." I know how hard this has been. I was part of the team to bargain the MOU, the memorandum of understanding on how to get this county working safely. the memorandum of understanding on how to get this county working safely. We did not talk about Democrats, we did not talk about Republicans. We talked about safety for the teachers. We talked about safety for the staff. We talked about safety for the children and success for the children. That was our concern. And we worked hard to try to come up with a plan to make it happen. That you have been accused of, some of the things that you have been accused of is disgusting. You have worked hard. We have worked hard. This county has worked hard to have a successful, successful year. It has been tough. This is the toughest 10 years of 2021 I've ever had. And I hope I never go through another decade like I just went through this year. The negativity is just sad. I know how hard Ms. Texel worked. I know how hard Dr. Corbin worked. I know how hard we all worked. With the PCTA, looking out, many sleepless nights, many phone calls, many tears with people that were worried about how we were going to get through this year. We got through this year. It was not easy. Thank you. Thank you. In addition to that, thank you for including all of the instructional personnel in the bonus plan that is coming out and full-time support staff. That is important because this is not teachers and principals. This is school board, teachers, principals, guidance counselors, support staff, bus drivers, janitors, everything is what it takes to make this school system work. So we need to make sure we recognize that and appreciate them. And I do. Now, we need to make sure we get people paid a little bit better. A living wage for some of these support people, these workers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joanne Marshall.
Good evening.
I've been here before talking to you about bullying in Pinellas County Schools. And the problem in Seminole Middle School has not been resolved. If it was you, you wouldn't want a teacher to call you a D I C K head. This is a 12-year-old child. You may have a bullying program, that I did see with all these fancy slides, but to me, it's all BS. Today, I want to read some comments from my son, who went through bullying in Broward County Schools from elementary to high school, all located in Parkland. "My name is Marshall, I'm 28 years old. I was excited when we moved from New Jersey to Florida and started kindergarten. What I did not know then was I would endure years of bullying with no help from teachers, the administration, counselors, or anyone else. Kids bullied and the parents bullied. Some years were worse than others. I was miserable and emotionally destroyed. I witnessed others being bullied. Instead of the bullied being the victim, somehow we were made out to be the bad people. My brother and sister were bullied as well. Nicholas Cruz was bullied, my daughter went to school with him. As the years went on, it got worse till I finally left the school without finishing high school. That experience is something I would not wish on any child. I've talked to Alicia Smith and I know how she feels. You have an example here of bullying to work through, yet you are failing. You must change how you address the issue or you will find yourselves in a situation like Parkland did. It is not just a student retaliating who has been bullied, but also those who choose to commit suicide. Don't put Alicia in a situation like me, where I grew up and wondered what my life could have been like if I wasn't subjected to years of bullying. You are responsible for the children when they are in your care. Do your jobs or you will be voted out. I am absolutely, as a mother who went through this, heartbroken listening to Cynthia. I know what it's like and it's horrible. You have to do something, I implore you, please do something." Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Taylor Huggan.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Taylor Huggan. I am a teacher at Cypress Woods Elementary in Eastlake. I've never actually spoken at a board meeting before, it's my first time. I just graduated from the University of Florida with my Master's of Education in Curriculum and Instruction. Was incredibly excited, very proud of myself, working full-time. And through a pandemic and going to grad school. I so excited submitted my transcripts to HR and was told that I do not qualify for the advanced degree supplement because curriculum and instruction does not fall under any area of certification. Now, I am certified in elementary education. I'm also certified in middle-grade social studies. And I think we could all agree here that the basis of what teachers do is develop and implement curriculum and doing that through instruction. And I was told because there is no exam, so there's no specific certification area in curriculum and instruction, I am not qualified to receive my master's supplement. And that was incredibly disappointing, of course, to hear after spending, you know, over $30,000 at the University of Florida to receive my degree. So I just asked that maybe that be revisited at some point, some understanding that how a degree, a Master's of Education in Curriculum Instruction, is not considered an area of certification for a teacher. To me, logically, does not make sense. And I was unfortunately denied by HR. However, I was told I had a concentration in educational technology, that I could receive it under educational technology, but I would have to take an exam. The exams I was provided by HR was library media specialist exam, computer science exam, or engineering exam, which I thought was very confusing as none of those fall under educational technology. So I thought it was interesting, they said I would qualify under educational technology with no matching exam, but not under curriculum instruction, which I have two L and elementary and a middle school certification for. So I asked that, one, that the curriculum and instruction be revisited as an area of certification qualifying for the advanced degree supplement, as that's the basis of what we do as classroom teachers. And then a suggestion I would have is that maybe we create a document with HR that actually shows what majors and degree programs would qualify, what exams you would need. Because going into this, though I'm very happy with what I selected, I might have chosen a different path, knowing that this was not one leading to additional financial security. Not that that's what it's about, we're not in education for money, clearly. But just having a document, maybe that explains to teachers who are looking to further their education, so that we know if you choose this major, this is not going to lead to the advanced degree supplement, and then this will. And this is the exam you'll need to take when you're done. I think that offers some clarity for teachers so they're not kind of blindsided like I was, just excited and was crushed. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Taylor, if you will, please. First of all, congratulations, we're happy to have you. And congratulations for your degree. Paula Texel is the head of Human Resources. Unfortunately, or I don't know what, it's hard to get into transcripts here and it's not really the best place. So unfortunately, some laws have been passed that have restricted us from doing some of those things that we would have otherwise done. But Ms. Texel heads up our Human Resources, she's right behind that clock there. So I should be overjoyed to talk with you. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good luck to you.
The idea of a list of master's degrees that would qualify, I think, is also a good idea. So thank you. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mark Clutho.
Again, welcome.
Mark Clutho. Perspective. Most important word. And we look at what was said tonight. The woman wearing the MAGA hat. She couldn't get the word complicit right. And then what did we hear from this woman in the cult? Oh, isn't it something? So sad. So sad. Where was Trump when I was in Vietnam? You have an answer for that one? Change the subject. Study links reduce screen time to raise cognition. How about that? And here's one, teaching slavery. The grade is an F. Getting back to the buildings and what's happening with this planet. Get ready for climate disasters. It's not going to be a pretty place. Giving aging buildings a green makeover. Developers are devising ways to retrofit New York's oldest structures to reduce their carbon footprints. Well, you have these buildings for two decades I've been coming here with the science of high-performance passive solar building that's being employed here with these retrofits. And it's just been flagrantly ignored. And that's why the hurricanes are getting bigger. Wildfires are getting worse and more frequent. And the ice is melting. Not going to be a pretty future for these students that you have.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Swigert.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Kathy Swigert, as you just announced, and I live in Clearwater. So I'm speaking about the curriculum. I'm not so familiar with everything that's being taught in the schools. I've just met parents and I've heard a lot of criticism. And I've done a lot of reading, so this is what, this is my opinion. Basically, as a school board, you have key roles. And one of them is ensuring schools operate in a manner that reflects local values and needs. Isn't that got offline? And we've heard a lot of parents today that have their needs, which is to have their children unmasked. And I see that we have a lot of irate parents who feel like they're not being listened to. That's something that you all get to handle. My subject is, in our country and in our county, the majority rules. In Pinellas County, our majority values and needs are this. We are conservative Americans who want our children well-educated with knowledge they can use to survive well in this world. I think we're all of like mind in that. If you want to open minds and enable all our children, this includes reading lots of different books to learn about many different cultures, ideas, experiences, attitudes, and decisions, both good and bad, that show consequences. Written by many different authors, including Anne Rand, Harper Lee, Shakespeare, and even Dr. Seuss, who made reading fun and silly. And some of these books have been canceled. I don't know if they were canceled here in your school. They were not? I'm so happy to hear that. Because the vast reading is what gives us a vast education. Real education includes learning phonics. Do you guys teach phonics? Good. Phonics using dictionaries. Now, I have talked to students who didn't understand the meaning of a word and the teacher told them, "Figure it out from the context." I even educated some college-level students in a seminar I was doing, and they were told the same thing. So this is backwards. You should get the dictionary out. How can you know if a word has seven different definitions, which is the one that fits in into that context? I mean, look at the word congress. Congress has a very wide range of definitions, all the way from the government meeting to having sex. It's like, where did the heck come from? So we have that. And then cursive was cut out of schools. Is it cut out of the schools here? Cursive? Yeah, I don't understand cutting out cursive writing. Because part of our education includes writing in such a way to make one's voice heard and duplicatable. Cursive, so as adults, our children can read the letters our grandparents wrote to each other and saved, which described World War II and what occurred and what happened in Germany or the original Declaration of Independence, or working out your own personal...
Thank you. Yeah. It is. Thank you. Yeah, you'll leave it with Mrs. Simonetti or Mr. Kupersky? They'll make, yeah.
Our next speaker is Kevin King. If Kevin King is not present, our next speaker will be Nancy Velardi.
Good evening.
Hello there. There are two issues I would like to put before you this evening. First is the issue of non-renewals. I understand that the law allows non-renewal of annual contract teachers at the end of any year. But is it truly in the best interest of Pinellas County Schools to non-renew teachers after their first year of teaching? Especially when there had been no interventions, no supports, or even conversations about what that teacher might need or do to improve? I doubt any educator in this room, or in any room across the nation, would claim that they were a great teacher in their first year. I know I was not. But I did become one with years of support and the expert guidance of my more seasoned colleagues. Which brings me to, what possible reason would those seasoned teachers, after 10 or 15 years of service, be non-renewed? Did they suddenly become inept at their craft? Or is it possibly a cost-savings maneuver? Annual contract vulnerability is only one in a long line of state-determined edicts. Which brings me to my second issue. Teachers and staff are constantly fighting against the gradual usurping of local control by the state legislature. But we need and expect your help. I understand that there are certain things that you have opposed. But we are asking that you take a stronger stand against people who are ill-qualified to make local decisions from doing so. Executive order after executive order in just the past year took control out of your capable hands and determined how schools opened despite a district's individual case numbers. The masking issue even was determined by those outside of our community. This has been a gradual takeover of locally-controlled public education that can only serve to eventually weaken us. Noneducators now determine when we teach, what we teach, and how we teach. Yet, we have seen no massive improvement in results. Teaching should be entrusted to the teacher, who not only has the appropriate schooling, training, and heart for the job, but has also been saddled with additional state-mandated trainings that have not proven to improve practice. Evaluations are determined by the state, used by many, and used by many as weapons to attack and dismiss teachers who refuse to conform to a state-recommended robotic methodology, which has no place in the education of children. I've heard this body appropriately commend the wonderful teachers of Pinellas County. It's time to give them back the autonomy to perform the function they were born to do and were trained for. If you want successful public schools, listen to those who love them rather than those who are seeking to destroy them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Kench. Is Mr. Kench still here? Cynthia Smith.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I do have to say, I understand you guys have had a lot going on. You guys have been working overtime, but you have missed some things. I've come here, week number five, story keeps getting worse, worse, worse. Not actually story, the events that my daughter... Not actually story, the events that my daughter goes through. I am excited to hear that next week, or next school board, you're voting on bullies getting sent to secondary schools. I hope you guys pass that. Because I have to say, what happened to Alicia and what happened at Seminole Middle School on May 28th was the same type of bullying. But Leo's thing was handled much better than Alicia's. I was not allowed to know what exactly happened to the kids and how they were disciplined, but I'm hearing from the media and your spokesperson that the kids got suspended and are being sent to a secondary school. Alicia still has to go to school, or had to go to school, with the students that physically attacked her. She still saw them in the hall every day. There was a thing that happened on March 12th, 13th, and 14th, and I know I sent it to everybody, where the kids bullied her. The teacher reported it, and the assistant principal said that they believe that the bullies over the teacher and Alicia. And they refused to remove the students from Alicia's classroom. It wasn't until Dr. Heinz, thank you, Dr. Heinz, came on and got into the meeting, third day in a row, meetings, and said, "We need to put a teacher in the classroom." That still made Alicia uncomfortable, because she's the center of attention, because there's a teacher there for her, but those kids were still allowed in the classroom. There was other students that were removed, and I was told because there was 14 days left, 14 and a half days left of school, the kids are not being removed from the classroom, by the assistant principal and the principal. That's what I was told. That my daughter was in fear for her safety, and it didn't matter. They're not removing because there's 14 and a half days of school. And this conversation happened on the 19th of May. Things need to change. I pray that you guys vote for that, for the bullies to be removed to a secondary school, where these teachers are trained better to handle this. I am so heartbroken. And Alicia couldn't make it today because she's so upset. She just can't, she's like, "Mom, I can't, I can't, who sit outside with the people?" She's like, "No, I can't handle it." So, please, let's get these laws changed, or policies changed, to make the school year better next year. Not some Trumped-up program. Let's see action, please. And let's get a workshop done with us parents whose children are bullies. Let's
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Vane.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to read you a quick Google search of "critical race theory." The first words are, "Critical Race Theory, CRT, is an academic movement of civil rights scholars and activists in the United States." So, I guess what I'm saying to you all is, we've seen the adoption of it in our culture, in corporations. And I hope to God it doesn't happen in Pinellas County schools, because we'll be watching. You've awoken the sleeping giant, and we will be watching. An academic theory that is being promulgated has no room in elementary, middle, and high-school education. I hope you all consider that and know, we will be watching. We will be watching very closely. Thank you so much, and we appreciate everything that you do. Good night.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Our final speaker this evening is Nick Pierce.
Good evening.
My first time here. I came motivated because I wanted to learn and understand why our education is failing our children. I heard all the self-congratulatory comments. I heard hard work. That doesn't equate to results. Let me give you a reality check. We're way behind the world in science, in math, in reading. We're not teaching our children to think objectively. That's why I came. But that's not why I was motivated to come up this evening. I was motivated by this lady here. In the other room, I heard her speak impassionately about her troubled child, who forgive me if I misheard you, but I thought you referenced your child might even be on the verge of suicide. Because of the COVID policies that this cognoscenti group has implemented. But what galls me, and Dr. Grego, will you look at me, please? Because I've been observing you. 80% of the time, you look down. You don't give your speakers any respect. Emails there, maybe?
I do, no, I'm taking some notes.
Well, I think, like any teacher, would respect eye contact. You ignored her multiple attempts, and I find that unconscionable. Arrogant disrespect comes to my mind, and I say, "Shame on you." You owe that woman an apology. I deal with CEOs. I evaluate them. I help pick them. The best CEOs listen to their customers. These are your customers. You're not listening to them. I've learned this evening, there are a lot of angry people. You're not doing your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers today.
And that ends this portion of the meeting. Thank you.